Sign in, please. Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, first up, we have Committee of the Whole closed meeting. Oh, okay. Uh, yes, Counselor, Counselor Cannon. No, no, but I'll give you a chance if you want to do that. You can do that now.
Licensed Realtor?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Committee of the Whole closed meeting.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, the council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following items: A, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, employment lands, and B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, senior staff contract.
Please vote. Can I get everybody to vote, please? Not, not trying to single anybody out, but can, can you vote, Counselor Hutchison? Thank you. And that carries. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We discussed a couple of items, one with respect to employment lands and the other is senior staff contract. So, Mr. Clerk, I will ask for a motion to waive our procedural rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, the council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived in the city clerk report.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that the city enter into a new employment agreement with the chief administrative officer Gerard Hynn for a term beginning September 2, 2018, on the terms and conditions recommended in the closed session meeting of October 3, 2017, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign that employment agreement in a form satisfactory to the Director of Legal Services.
Please vote. And that carries by a vote of ten to one. We'll move to approval of the added. We have a couple of motions of condolence. We have a, a report from the CAO, we have a new motion, couple of items of miscellaneous business and a number of communications. Can I have a mover for the added, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor Ossanik.
I, Lisa Ossanik of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion number two, discussing the distribution of naloxone kits to public institutions, and that I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, which would provide the funding for the distribution of the kits.
Thank you. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you through you. I, Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number 99 and closed meeting session, item number one, as I am a licensed Realtor.
Thank you. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I, Mary Rita Holland of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of the briefing with respect to a memorandum of understanding between the City of Kingston and Queen's University, as I am currently employed by Queen's University.
Thank you. Seeing no other disclosures of pecuniary interest, we will move on. We do not have any presentations this evening, but we do have several delegations. So first, we will invite Ronald Holderson, General Manager and Chief Executive Officer of St. Lawrence Parks Commission, and Jeff Wasick, Manager of Historic Attractions St. Lawrence Parks Commission, who will appear before council to speak to clause one of report number 98 received from the CAO with respect to the Kingston Penitentiary Tours 2018. And just a reminder to all our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, your worship. We're also joined by our Board Chair Ian Wilson today. I would like to say, as we almost close out the season, we will be closed at the end of October, that as of 2:00 AM this morning, which is more up to date than what's in your package, we have had 94,000 visitors to the Kingston Penitentiary, and we've sold 1,090, 100,090 tickets. That's an incredible number for our first full May to October season. During July and August, the average tours were from 800 to 1,000 per day, and in the May, June, September, October, it's ranging between 200 and 400 visitors. We estimate the total revenue generated at 3.7 million, and we estimate the profit to be 1.6 million. That would be divided 50% to the United Way and 50% for the marketing of Kingston as a tourism destination cooperatively by Tourism Kingston and the St. Lawrence Parks Commission. The Ontario Tourism Regional Economic Impact Model suggests that the economic impact of this summer's endeavor was 8 million. We employed 100 people, 60 of whom were students from mostly Queen's, St. Lawrence College, and some high school, and 25 were former Correctional Services Canada employees. That's a bit of an update. We have met with Lanny Hurdle and Don Head, Correctional Service Canada's Commissioner, about being able to do this again next year between May and October, and we look forward to the opportunity to provide service again to the city of Kingston in delivering this incredible tourism trip motivator.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Shell.
Thank you. That's really, really good news. Is there any chance, this just crossed my mind because the end of the parking lot has a big fence, and as I've wandered around there, I've met the occasional tourist who's trying to get to the water, and they don't realize they can just sort of go around. Is there any talk of taking down that fence?
So that would be a land use decision that would be between the Correctional Services Canada people and whoever acquires the land. So we're only authorized to provide tours within the confines of the walls.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, congratulations. It was a wonderful season. Do you see some potential marketing opportunities with Alias Grace, which I, like a lot of Canadians, am totally addicted to?
Well, I, I would say two things in answer. First, that doesn't answer. It is that Tourism Kingston and the St. Lawrence Parks Commission have invested 300,000 in the development of three television commercials, and another 200,000 in a fall campaign, and we hope to invest the incoming remaining profit in a spring campaign for Kingston. I've seen the commercials for Alias Grace. I'm looking forward to seeing it, and there's a couple of shots that tell me very clearly that people are going to want to come and see where Alias Grace was shot. So absolutely, I think there are opportunities to enhance the visitor's experience by saying, "Did you see Alias Grace? That was shot there," for sure.
Thank you.
And thanks for the congratulations.
Great. Seeing no other questions. Oh, Counselor Hutchison.
Just a brief one. Just throwing out ideas, as my colleague just did. Have you thought of connecting this to The Convict Lover?
To?
The Convict Lover, a novel written by Mary Lynn Simmons, who's a local author.
We are selling literature in the store. Is that one of the books that we have for sale? No, we'll add it to the list, for sure.
Okay. It's quite a good book, actually. Okay. And it's about letters written to, from a convict to a young woman who lived in Fort Smith Village.
Thank you. Thanks. Good tip.
Any, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to delegation number two. Dr. Kieran Moore, Medical Officer of Health, Kingston-Fronnak-Lennox and Atkinson Public Health, will appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to naloxone.
Your worship, councillors, thank you very much for the opportunity to address this issue. The opioid epidemic is a major issue across North America, and Kingston in our region is not immune. We've had over 74 deaths between 2013 and 2016 within the Southeast Lynn, so that's over one death a month from exposure to this dangerous class of drugs. And I also want to inform our community that fentanyl is in our community. It has been laced in different drugs in our community, and carfentanil, another very powerful narcotic, has been detected in our community. As a result, I have significant, significant support for the motion that's before council on regards to making naloxone more available and informing our public about the risk of this class of drugs. Even, even a few grains of salt of fentanyl mixed in with any drug in our community is powerful enough to kill someone. There's never been a more dangerous time to take drugs in our community. As a result, we're suggesting that if you're going to use drugs in our community, that you make naloxone, make sure that you know where naloxone is available. You can pick it up at a local pharmacy for free. You can pick it up at the, uh, Street Health Clinic as well. Soon, our local public health agency will be able to distribute to our partner organizations to ensure that naloxone's more accessible and available. Naloxone is the antidote for opiate overdose, and it is available through a nasal spray and through, and through an injection. It can reverse the effects of an opiate overdose, but it's also essential that if you're witnessing someone having an overdose, that you call 911, you administer the naloxone, you stay with that person, and provide appropriate CPR as, as needed in the event of cardiac arrest. I'd also like to highlight that the Good Samaritan Act has been passed at a provincial level, and that there should be no penalties for calling 911 if there are drugs found at the scene. So this is the most dangerous time to be taking drugs, and I absolutely support the motion that's before council.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Strode.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. And I do have a couple of questions, two different aspects of this motion that I was considering adding an amendment to that would be complimentary. The first one has to do with the, um, I'm a registered nurse, so I'm aware of the effects of Narcan firsthand, and it sometimes can be dramatic if, if it's given quickly. And I'm wondering, with the kits that you're mentioning, is there any risk of hyper alert situation where, where a patient is unsedated very quickly and, and may be difficult to control? If it's just one person administering and waiting for 911, that could be a safety hazard, and I wonder what you have to say about that?
I would agree with the comments from Counselor that naloxone can induce withdrawal in someone that's dependent on opioids, and withdrawal could make the patient violent or make more, more alert. From a, you know, a risk management vantage point, I'd rather have them alert and fighting rather than in a respiratory arrest. So naloxone generally is very safe when it's used by the public in, in an overdose situation, but that is a potential negative consequence.
Sure. I have another question. It is, I agree that it is safe for the patient, but for the administrator might not be so safe if they did become violent. The other question has to do with the other end of the problem, which you've sort of alluded to in your presentation, about what's being done about the root cause of over prescription of narcotics at the prescriber level. And, and is there any initiative along that? You mentioned Good Samaritan efforts. Is there anything going on at provincial level or at the public health level on that score?
I think it's been in the news that the, the ministry has started a narcotic monitoring system where they're going to be monitoring the prescribing practices of various physicians. And the ministry, together with the College of Physicians, has identified 86 high prescribers, and they've been put through remediation and education, and one of those 86 has been put through discipline for absolutely inappropriate prescribing. I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. We are the highest prescribing province and the highest prescribing country in the world for opiates, and our region is not immune. We're a very high prescriber. We should be working with Queen's University, the Faculty of Medicine, the Dean of Health Sciences, and we should be educating our future physicians to prescribe more safely. And I'm happy to say that we do have very strong initiatives in place starting in the next few months with Kingston Health Sciences Centre to educate all physicians about the harms associated with this class of drugs and to prescribe more safely.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm just trying to get a handle on how far the health unit thinks that the naloxone kits should go into the community. This is rather vague. Is there sort of a, a list of who should have these kits, how they're trained? I mean, I'm presuming you don't want someone like me, who sees somebody drop on the ground, and the kit's there to use it. But I, I honestly don't know the way this is written and, and the way I keep hearing about it in the, in the public.
I think that's a great question. So I'll start with, we've, we've concentrated our efforts with the Community Health Centre and Street Health Clinic to try to identify the highest-risk users of narcotics in our community. And so those would be those individuals that use intravenous drugs. And our Street Health Clinic has been very good in, in providing naloxone kits to that highest-risk population. In fact, I'm happy to say we've had 140 saves, patients saved in the last year by, by their hard work in our community. And that, to me, is just remarkable, because each one of those could be a, could have been a death in our community. So they've been great in working with a high-risk community. And there is a dose at which opiates become more dangerous, and that's a dose of 50mg of morphine equivalent. The death rate from being on a higher dose is almost exponential after that dose. So we're asking physicians to identify anyone at a high dose in their community and their practice, and to ensure that, that those patients have naloxone. The other worrisome issue, though, is that any drug could be contaminated with fentanyl. And we know through our partnerships with Street Health and intelligence services in, in our community, that drugs are being contaminated. So opiates, you know, heroin, intravenous drug use is not the only risk now. And that's why I'm trying to get across that this is the most dangerous time to use any drug. And it is prudent to never use alone, no matter what drug you're going to be using, and to have a naloxone kit with you, to know how to use it, and, and to be able to call 911. This, there's never been a more dangerous time to experiment or to use any drug in our community.
Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. You mentioned that we have the highest prescription rate here in Kingston and in Ontario in general and in Canada. How does this translate into people who may be addicted or marginally addicted in our community?
Difficult to translate to absolute numbers. In Ontario, we, we have, physicians have prescribed around 9 million bottles of pill, pills to 13 million people. I think from a population level, that's way too high. And that, and that number of milligram morphine equivalents has to come down. And so we're talking about how much morphine can you prescribe to a community that's safe? And we have to start concentrating on, on bringing that level to a safer level where we're not experiencing overdoses in our community. In terms of the number of people that have been identified that have had addiction to methadone in our community, it's roughly around 1,000, or to opiates, it's roughly around 1,000 people in our community are, are on daily methadone substitution replacement therapy. That's 1,000 Kingstonians on that daily treatment. That's probably 25% of what it should be. We should probably have up to 4,000 people on daily substitution therapy. That'll be safer, that'll have less harm and less risk of overdose, and probably good analgesic effect if they're having chronic pain for any purpose. They're startling numbers, really.
Thank you. And I understand that this is like one of the things that we can do right now in the community, but it's also part of a larger community drug policy. Can you mention like how harm reduction is part of this broader strategy?
Well, thanks very much. So Counselor Strode has clearly identified that there, we have to have a multi-pronged, multi-component strategy. The first strategy is prevention, stopping individuals from having access to opiates. They are a highly addictive class of drugs, so that's where we're working with Kingston Health Sciences Centre. The longer the prescription that we give to an individual their first time, the higher the risk of addiction. And 90% of those that get addicted to heroin in our community started by a visit to the emergency department, or the dentist, or their very first prescription, and then that prescription got renewed, and got renewed, and got renewed. So we have to primary prevention, decrease the amount that we're prescribing, be very sensitive. This is a high-risk class of drugs for, for addiction and for overdose. Also provide better treatment for chronic pain, better treatment for opiate use disorders and addiction, as well as work in harm reduction, as well as work with surveillance and enforcement. It's a four-pillar approach that we're trying to integrate with our Lynn, as well as cross our sister health units in this region.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yeah, just one quick question. Are, are our first responders embracing the potential of using this anecdote for?
Absolutely. I should highlight that we were the first community to prepare for what's called a mass casualty event. So if a drug, and this has happened in Surrey, BC, it's happened in multiple different cities in the States, we brought together 90 of our EMS partners, our police partners, our first responders, our emergency physicians, primary care physicians, and strategized how we could improve the availability of naloxone across all of the health system, and stockpile it in case there's a sudden spike in overdoses, and, and ensure that we had the right amount of naloxone in case we have an even more powerful fentanyl introduced into our drug system. So we did that prior to Toronto having its rise in overdoses, prior to Ottawa having its rise in overdoses, and I think because of that action that we've done as a community, we are, we are well-prepared for these types of events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our third delegation this evening, Susan Ducharme, will appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to naloxone.
Thank you, your worship and councillors, for allowing me to speak. I'm here because I'm the lived experience part of it. My son, Devon Ducars, died of an overdose, April 2nd of 2016. It wasn't, he died of a heroin overdose. It wasn't, it was one of two overdoses that day. His was not, the heroin wasn't fentanyl-laced, it wasn't fentanyl involved. But what I want to speak about is naloxone. He was not carrying naloxone. He, he didn't, even though he was a regular user of opioids, he didn't identify as a opie, as a, somebody with substance use disorder. He identified as a person in pain, in physical pain and, mental and emotional pain. So by the time he got to the hospital, he was, he wasn't breathing on his own, and he eventually died before I could make it to the hospital. So his story isn't really pertinent to this, but I, since then, about a year after he died, his, one of his very good friends and friends of mine, Jose Varla, died of a fentanyl-laced heroin in a bathroom at a pizza joint. There was no naloxone on hand. He was taken to the hospital. He was put on life support. And his mother, a few weeks later, had to make the very difficult decision of taking him off life support. These two people were amazing human beings. Devon was intellectually gifted. He was musically gifted. He was a bright light, compassionate soul, very courageous soul. He managed to live till he was 24 in emotional pain. And heroin opiates were his vehicle to, it sounds strange, but to survive. The other day, my son, Sam, his best friend's mother died of an opiate overdose. He also witnessed an overdose on Princess Street, which gave a visual to his brother's death. It was very traumatizing for him. So this is why naloxone in the city is very, very important. This is why naloxone in our high schools, in our public schools, is very important. It should be mandatory to have naloxone kits on hand in bars, in restaurants, in cafes, at fast food joints. Because, and for community members, you, me, to carry a naloxone kit, because you never know, you don't know. We need to have all hands on decks. When, when Dr. Gemmell says that this is, this is a very unsafe time to, to, to be using or using recreationally, he's right. And there are so many people that don't identify as drug users. They're using recreationally. The ages where people will begin to use or experiment is between nine and 15 years. That's public school and high school. That's why it's really important to have it, mandatory as far as I'm concerned, to be in the tool, in, in people's first aid kits at school, and to be in first aid kits in any public scape, space, libraries, you name it. I can't stress this enough. It's a very important harm reduction tool. It gives a person who is overdosed another day in their life to find recovery.
Thirty seconds.
Thanks.
You, you have a few more seconds if there's any questions.
Oh, thanks. Anyway, it's, it's a really important tool, but it's also a Band-Aid. It's, it's, it's not going to end the overdose crisis. It's not going to, it will give people an extra day. It'll keep, give people extra days to find recovery. But we, we need much more than that in, in this community and beyond. We need government at a provincial and, and basically federal level to develop a backbone.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there any questions from council? Counselor Neal.
Thank you. Being a former high school teacher, I knew, I know it took us years even to get EpiPens.
Yep.
Into, into schools.
Yep.
Are you aware of school boards or schools being more open to the idea?
No, they're not open. From what I have gathered and what people, harm reduction workers have told me, is that they're pushing back. And, and this is a really serious issue, and this speaks to the stigma surrounding addiction. People are pushing, school board, the school board is pushing back, because basically what they're saying is they, they will, they will quietly admit that drugs are in the schools or outside of the schools, that people, that kids will, my son did it. So many other people did it, his age. At KC, they'll go off property at lunch or at break or, and, and they'll find it, or they'll be able to talk to somebody in the school who knows somebody in the school who can provide the drugs. So, so when push comes to shove, they will quietly admit that this happens in all schools. It doesn't discriminate. It's not a North Side thing. It's, it's, it's not a, it's not any of those things. It doesn't discriminate. It's on the South Side. It's on the South Side, it's on the North Side, it's in the country schools, it's everywhere. And, but they, they don't want to admit it, they don't, they don't want to openly admit it that that's what's going on in their school.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, are there any other delegations? Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. This is moved by myself, seconded by councillor O'Sannick, that bylaw 2010-1 clause eleven point four and eleven point five be waived to add a delegation, Mary Farrar, to speak to report number one hundred, received from the Administrative Policies Committee, clause six, with respect to the public engagement framework.
Okay, so we will call the vote. Please vote. Are there any other delegations to add? Last call? Okay, so with that, we will invite Mary Farrar to speak to council with respect to report one hundred, clause six, the public engagement framework.
Thank you so much for bearing with me once again. I am here, it's a good news story, so no worries, but I feel I need to come and talk to this. My graduate work was in sociolinguistics, which is to say, the interaction of language and culture and thought. And so, this is so dear to my heart, the whole idea of public engagement, and I think the city has done a wonderful job of outreach. But this, the whole issue is pretty much a classic case of one of the major types of problem, problems with communication, and that is differing underlying assumptions. So I think what we've had is the corporate view of engagement that the city has espoused, which sees engagement as informing people and getting a lot of people involved in coming to meetings or filling out surveys. On the other hand, the citizen perspective on what engagement is, is a two-way conversation, where the citizens feel that they should be provided with feedback as to how what they said was used by city staff in some way. Like when people fill out a survey or put a little post-it, there should be some kind of reporting back in terms of what percentage of people thought this or that. So I think because of these underlying assumptions, it's caused, when you're, when you're in the middle of this, you don't kind of think of the underlying assumptions, you're just caught up in, we have a problem, and the other side doesn't seem to understand where we are. But I think the city has done a great job of outreach here, and they have, I, the only prob, they have, okay, two things that they have put together that I think in the report that are quite exceptional, really, and groundbreaking, in fact, is one, that change can occur either by being staff-driven, or council-driven, or citizen-driven. And the KNP trail, for example, is an example of a staff, an initiative that was citizen-driven, even though staff didn't really like the idea in many ways. The other thing is that staff has incorporated ideas from the International Association of Public Participation, and they have really pointed to the different modes of interaction and engagement, starting out with informing, which is totally one way from the city to the citizens, but then moving on to the other, the other aspects of consulting, involving, collaborating, and empowering, that all involve different processes of getting to the end result. So this is all great. I only have two small objections, and they are to do with the definitions at the very beginning. The first one is the definition of public engagement, because it's kind of like the problem when you have written a hundred-page paper, and then you have to revise the abstract or the summary, and I think that kind of was just forgotten a little bit here, because the definition of public engagement here is really falling back on the corporate idea of just informing, and I think it should also include the collaborating and empowerment and other aspects of engagement that are in the heart of the report. And the other thing is the public engagement charter. It says here in the definition that it's a commitment between council and residents for public engagement, but it should also include staff. So those are just two small suggestions, but on the whole, I do believe that this is really a groundbreaking document, and I want to commend staff on, on the outreach.
Thirty seconds.
And the final report, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for your comments. Regarding one of the other sort of purposes involved in public engagement, which is to get more people involved in providing input or being part of the policy direction of the city, as somebody who has been quite involved, can, do you have any comments or suggestions at this point in terms of how to expand the level of involvement?
No, short answer.
No?
I mean, I just think it's very hard. Some people are just love to get involved and other people don't, and I think that the city does try hard to reach out in a variety of ways, and community groups, groups do the same. But I can't think of a magic bullet, really, no, sorry.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our delegations, so we will move to briefings. We do have one briefing. Gerard Hunt, chief administrative officer, will provide introductory remarks, and then Daniel Wolfe, principal and vice chancellor of Queen's University, will provide a briefing with respect to the City of Kingston, Queen's University Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. In January 2017, the city and Queen's University signed an MOU, and that MOU was meant to advance initiatives between the city and Queen's to continue to build on the long and valued friendship to advance many shared interests, including innovation, workforce development, economic, and community development. Tonight, Principal Wolfe is in attendance and is here to offer some observations on the collaborations and on his reflections of the past nine months and what the future looks like as it relates to this strategic partnership. Thank you, Principal Wolfe.
Thank you very much, CAO Hunt, for that kind introduction, and good evening, everyone, Mayor Patterson, councillors and fellow Kingstonians. I would like to thank Mayor Patterson for inviting me to speak with you today, and I look forward to returning the favor when I introduce him, when he speaks with our Board of Trustees the week after next. I know that over the summer, his worship was able to tour some of our research labs, the Dunan-Deshpande Queen's Innovation Centre and Innovation Park. We're here to have a conversation about the relationship between the City of Kingston and Queen's University, and more specifically on our partnership to advance innovation. Both sides have worked very hard over the past several years to build and indeed restore trust and dialogue as the foundational principles of our overall relationship, principles that serve us well as we deal with issues of joint concern that invariably rise, given our close juxtaposition. Our joint commitment to partner on advancing economic development, talent, and innovation is a sign, I think, of just how far the relationship has progressed. I care deeply about innovation because at its most basic, innovation means making things better for everyone. It holds the power of transformation, and that is the core of our academic and teaching missions. So innovation and transformation can be part of what we all do every day, and we have a strong record of working together to achieve positive results for all involved. Councillors, your districts provide opportunities and experiences for Queen's students all the time, particularly in working with Kingston youth. For example, our students and staff teach and learn valuable lessons about positive social change through partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, Pathways to Education, and Joe's Musical Instrument Lending Library. The Gales football team goes into local elementary schools to show students how we can always approve, improve with effort, good strategies, and help from others. And Queen's engineering students work with teachers to show how hands-on creating and making can excite young learners. But our students reach out to seniors as well. In the Kingstown and Meadowbrook, Strathcona districts, our students enjoy volunteering with seniors through the Generations Committee, teaching them technology skills, and even throwing a senior prom, which I'm told gets almost as rowdy as homecoming. In another vein, I always mention the scramble crossing on our campus as an innovation on which City Hall, the Alma Major Society, and Queen's came together. Students are delighted with it, and we are frequently compared to Toronto for having our city implement this safe solution for pedestrian traffic. In short, making things better for everyone, or innovation, can take many forms and involves many groups working together. Here in Kingston, I see innovation as standing on three legs: the university, the city, and community partners, including the private sector, and our strong base of public and not-for-profit organizations. But in the end, it all comes down to people and relationships, and that's why this innovation partnership between Queen's and the City of Kingston means a great deal to me. The research happening at Queen's translates into products and services that benefit the public with the help of the community to drive it forward. So let me tell you about how some students spent their summer working on innovations with a public benefit. Queen's hosted the annual Dunan-Deshpande Centre Pitch Competition in August. This event, if you don't know it, lets students in a summer entrepreneurship boot camp compete for up to $100,000 in seed funding for companies that they develop over a four-month period. There was a pitch for investing in adjustable grab bars to improve the independence, safety, and confidence of those with physical limitations. And another group commercialized a device for quicker, more accurate detection of minute traces of chemicals, which could improve safety in a variety of sectors, including first responders and the food industry. I'm very proud that this team, known as Spectra Plasmonics, recently won a global business plan competition in Singapore, including prize money of $125,000 to develop their company. Your worship, you will remember meeting this group, as well as the researchers behind their technology during your campus tour this summer, and I'm delighted to see that you will be announcing your innovation challenge to students tomorrow. All of these are great innovations, but I think the most amazing thing was just how much this community helped these budding entrepreneurs. In some cases, Queen's professors brought promising research ideas to students who were keen to take those discoveries to the next step of product development. Other student-run companies recruited students, medical professionals, and educational institutions across Kingston to test their fledgling products and services. And local companies helped manufacture and test product prototypes. Now, I am not a football coach, this year thankfully, but I know that innovation is a contact sport. That is, it happens when an idea collides with many players. I'm also not a biologist, but I know something about innovation ecosystems. Together, Queen's and Kingston are trying to create the right environment to get these entrepreneurs the right tools so that innovations are more likely to emerge. Just as some of our undergraduate students are transforming their education through entrepreneurship, so too are some of our graduate students and faculty. One example is a Queen's PhD graduate who translated and reapplied discoveries from the physics lab to create industrial applications in the auto sector. He now has a Kingston-based company called Laser Depth Dynamics located on Railway Street that is hiring other graduates from Queen's and keeping them in Kingston. Tech2PDS manufactures the world's first automated system for microbiological water testing based on a discovery by Queen's faculty and students, and has attracted international investments and clients. The company has its corporate headquarters in downtown Kingston, with the key ingredient in the detection system being manufactured at Innovation Park by Green Centre Canada. Production of their hardware is handled by Kingston-based BoJack Manufacturing, a startup company founded by a Queen's graduate who stayed in Kingston. Another example is Performance Plants, now based on Gardiner's Road, founded by a Queen's biology professor. That is one of the longest-spanning, longest-standing spin-off companies from Queen's. The company has half a dozen technologies that improve crops used for food and energy, with approximately 100 patents worldwide, and it employs, again, several graduates from Queen's. So I'm not a coach, and I'm not a biologist, but I am a historian, and I can say that historically, many of our best successes have come from working with partners. So what can we achieve when Queen's and City Hall work together in growing Kingston's innovation ecosystem? The MOU that the CAO mentioned, which we signed in January between Queen's and the city, has three pillars. It commits us to work closely together to pursue opportunities in support of economic development, talent attraction and retention, and innovation. I mentioned some spin-off companies from Queen's that are now thriving, but Kingston is showing that it can also be a major competitor in attracting foreign investment. Look, for example, at the Frulact and Fahy endeavors. The city, Kedco, and Queen's, along with other partners, are working to help these companies put down deep roots, and I applaud the city's number-one rank for attracting foreign direct investment as a huge accomplishment. I think the expansion of the airports is going to play a big part in economic development, and this is a significant effort by City Hall, of which I am personally a very strong supporter. It will help Queen's attract more major conferences and events to Kingston, and it will showcase the enviable quality of life here. With regard to attracting talent and helping them put down roots, the Kingston workforce development and in-migration strategy is beginning to tackle many elements of this issue. Part of that issue is spousal employment, with which we have frankly struggled when attracting new professors and some senior non-academic staff. Queen's is often not big enough to find places for professional couples, but by sharing opportunities with community partners, we can all help to embrace new residents. I'm also pleased to see that City Hall is hiring Queen's students as interns. This program, which gives students an opportunity to work for a year between third and fourth year before finishing their degrees, can be a transformative experience. I see students gain real-world experience and grow enormously in self-confidence and people skills, while their employers benefit from their smarts, their skills, their energy, and their enthusiasm. So I've addressed the first two pillars of the MOU, economic development and talent attraction and retention, and I spoke earlier about how innovation can make things better for everyone. Indeed, I think we can acknowledge that community building or improving the quality of place and space is in itself a form of innovation. And here I want to touch briefly on diversity and inclusion as a form of community building, and this is a matter that is close to my heart, as I believe it is for many of you in this room. And just as the City of Kingston is committed to changing the conversation about our city, so too is Queen's focusing on diversity. so too is Queen's focusing on diversity and inclusion within our campus culture, our academic programs, our research, and our hiring. City Hall is starting to do some great things, such as the motion passed unanimously by council to make a clear and responsive statement about anti-racism and supporting diversity. And I want Queen's to be a university that works hard at being better, and one that can be proud of the example that we set. And there are two aspects to diversity and inclusion that are especially relevant to the partnership between Queen's and the City of Kingston. First, attracting more undergraduate international students to Queen's is a major goal for me and has been since I started in the job, and we're proving to be quite successful in attracting students from around the world and having them stay for the course of their degree programs. Not only does this help the diversity and cultural awareness of all students, but it also helps our Canadian students become globally literate, and it promotes Queen's as a hub for building world understanding. The other aspect of diversity and inclusion that is at the forefront of my mind is our faculty renewal initiative. Your worship and councillors, we are in the enviable position of being able to hire 200 new faculty members over the next five years. These people will be some of the best and brightest in their fields and will come from locations around the globe. This new generation of faculty are innovators in the classroom, in the labs, and in the community. But we need your help to ensure that Kingston is seen as a destination where people from all backgrounds feel as comfortable as they would in any global hub, where Kingston is a destination within Canada for these faculty members to live, work, thrive, and raise families in your districts. I've now lived here for eight years, not including my prior years as an undergraduate and then a postdoctoral fellow. In fact, I have lived more of my life in Kingston than in any other location. And I'm proud of what the community has to offer, including, though it may seem a small example, the sugar cookies from Cards Bakery that my wife and I deliver to students studying for exams. I've had the pleasure of becoming part of the fabric of Kingston, and I'd like the same for others. I've talked about the great strides we've made working together to build social, economic, and community innovation, but there is much more to do. I know that Queen's can be a somewhat complicated partner to work with, and I often hear that it's hard to find a front door into it. But I can offer a front door to those of you here today, so please, if you have an idea or an issue that you want to pursue with Queen's, please feel free to bring it to me. Your worship, I look forward to hearing your perspective on our partnership when you join me at the Board of Trustees later this month. I believe our partnership is strong, our values line up, and you're already doing great things to make Kingston a place where people want to be. We need to continue with this momentum, use this partnership to drive innovation, and in turn, we can see how innovation, in all its forms, can make this a better community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to petitions. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we do have two motions of condolence. First, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Holland, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the friends and family of Colleen White, Building Attendant in Facilities Management and Construction Services, on the passing of her father, Nolan Tommy White, on September 21, 2017. Tommy will be dearly missed by all those that knew him. Our thoughts are with Colleen and her family during this difficult time. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Shell, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Rick Brzee, Deputy Mayor of Loyalist Township and member of the Kingston and Area Taxi Commission and the Brzee family, on the loss of their daughter, Carly Brzee, who passed away on September 22, 2017. Our thoughts are with their family during this difficult time. So we will call the vote, please. We have no deferred motions, and so we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number 97 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number 97 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are five clauses. Would anyone like any of the clauses separate? Councillor O'Sannick?
Clause four, please.
Okay, seeing no other separations, we will vote first on the balance of the items. So clause one, it's approval of a housekeeping amendments to bylaw number 98-8, as amended, being a bylaw to appoint statutory officials of the Corporation of the City of Kingston. Clause two, a word of contract localized repairs at Robert Bruce Garage. Clause three, a word of contract mini-cargol van. And clause five, request for noise exemption, MTO Highway 401 P. So we call the vote. And that carries. Clause four, establishment of a planning advisory working group. Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. I'm through you, a few questions to staff, and with this advisory planning committee. So no specific reports will go to the committee, right? Like, no specific applications that will be going to planning committee will go to the advisory committee first? It's more general planning issues that would go to this advisory committee?
Ms. Sackner?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So that's correct. This committee, we're suggesting it be established to be more of a working group that would be working alongside staff and advising them related to citywide large projects, so similar to the official plan. The group would work on something like that, or some of the other larger initiatives we have, but not specifically dealing with individual development applications.
Thank you. And then, does a report go to planning committee? Like, so they're gonna have probably three meetings a year, right? Once a quarter, and usually there's no meetings in the summertime. So after they have a meeting in the wintertime, would a report be written, and then that goes to planning committee? And it would just be the comments, or do they actually have a recommendation in their report to planning committee?
Ms. Sackner?
We see it more, like I said, as a working group, so they'd be working alongside staff and helping to inform the recommendations on a project that would eventually go to planning committee. I think we had, in our staff discussions, tried to figure out the best way to pull the information that would be discussed at the working group and have that flow through planning committee, and whether or not there could be some reporting out at planning committee in that respect. We don't have all of the details worked out 100%, but that was the general approach that we were talking about.
Thank you, your worship. If I could just, no more questions, but now just make a comment, because I want to move an amendment. So it looks like there'll probably be, well, what's recommended is eight members of the committee. And the one that I think I want to move the amendment to eliminate is that no member of the committee can belong to a community association. If there's only gonna be two or three meetings each year, I don't think that's a problem. Like, I don't think that's too burdensome to say that, hey, if you belong to this community association, you're not allowed to be considered to be part of that committee. And so that's, and also, just the logistic problem with nominations committee, how are they gonna know if someone applies has, you know, has ties to one of the community associations out there across Kingston? So what I would like to move as an amendment is for this part of the terms of reference that talks about the committee members is just to eliminate that, delete the words that says, "No representation of a local community group or neighborhood association."
Okay, thank you. So motion to amend, moved by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by councillor Stroud. So councillor O'Sannick, so as you've described, it would be to delete the words, or representatives of a local community group or neighborhood association.
That's right.
And then, again, the same deletion of those words in the second paragraph. Okay. So there is a motion to amend on the floor. Councillor O'Sannick has spoken to it. Anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion to amend only? Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. When I read the motion, my thought had been, oh, so if a member of, say, the Portsmouth District Community Association wants to be on this committee, they should not be on the committee as a representative of Portsmouth, because then Williamsville and whoever else is in the urban area would perhaps feel that they aren't represented. So I, my understanding from why staff would put this in here was that a person is not to speak as a representative. So perhaps there's a little bit of confusion in this, in the way that it can be interpreted, because that's how I interpreted it. You are not to suddenly have a member of, say, if there's a rural area group that wants to be on it and say, well, actually, I'm a representative of the anti-solar farm community, and that's gonna be my focus. So if staff could clarify that for me, that that was the intent, that you would say, I am a person who lives in the center of the city, and that's, I expect to discuss things as that person, that type of person.
Ms. Sackner?
Thank you, and through you. So staff's thinking on it and putting together a composition of individuals that would come together to form this working group. There are a few things that we took into consideration. One, first and foremost, we wanted to make sure that it was an assembly of a group of people that was going to be highly functional, that were gonna be available for the meetings. And we looked at the structure of other working groups that we've had success with. We're using North Kingstown as a most recent example of a general size of a working group. If a working group is too small, if people aren't there, then it's ineffective. If it becomes too large and you have 20 people, 15 people on it. So we were looking for something that was in and around sort of like the seven to 10 individual size. So we started working from that size as being most functional. We were also trying to achieve the greatest representation of views from across the city, taking into consideration First Peoples as well, and some of the economic development, but really wanted to also try to get a geographic representation from across the city, which is why you see members from the rural area, from Kingston West, urban area, et cetera, et cetera. So in putting in the piece related to the neighborhood association, councillor Shell is correct, and our assumption around that was trying to make sure that there was good representation from an overall geographic area of the city, knowing that within that geographic area, there could be multiple neighborhood associations. So at the expense of not excluding anybody and having a working group that was too large in size, we were trying to put some parameters in place.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to add, in terms of the question, the specific question that councillor Shell asked, there's nothing preventing a person that is a member of an association, neighborhood association, to actually submit their names and be part of this working group. The only thing, as councillor Shell mentioned, is that we would be looking for that individual to speak on their behalf and not necessarily speak on behalf of an entire group.
That's what I thought. I thought it was a language problem more than an intention problem. So I don't think it's necessary to change the wording, partly because if you do, then you could wind up with someone saying, I am here as the, you know, something of this association, and this is my focus. And we're looking for a wider focus, in my opinion, for this group. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Yes, I support the amendment as it's presented, because if I was, if I saw an advertisement, and at various times I belong to three different neighborhood or community groups, that says that I'm precluded, if I, if I'm on a local community group or neighborhood association, I think that would discourage and be a disincentive to being involved. If indeed, the intent is just to assure that the person isn't going solely with the agenda of their neighborhood association or their community association, they aren't representatives of that group. But all of us who are active in the community have a variety of organizations that we affiliate with. And just because of that affiliation, I don't believe we should be precluded or discouraged from putting our names forward to this kind of an organization. So I think this is an important amendment to support.
Thank you. Councillor Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So my interpretation is this: if we were excluding members of neighborhood associations, I wouldn't support that, because I think that councillor Neil has said it well, that at the end of the day, the fact that you're a member of an association, that you're, is just showing that you're civically engaged in the community, and those are exactly the people we're looking at. So if it had said, if you're a member of an association, you're excluded, then I would have a big problem with that. But the way I read that is, it doesn't say "member," it says "representative." When you're a representative, you are there representing that association, which I think is the problem. So based on that language, having thought it through, because I could have gone either way, but thinking it through, I think that the best thing to do is to vote against the amendment. And then, if we could just have assurance from staff, that obviously, when we are doing a call-out, that that language can be there so that nobody feels that just because you're a member of an association that you'd be excluded. I think that's the last thing we'd want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Okay. Councillor Stroud?
Thanks, your worship. And your comments lead perfectly into my comments. So, and I agree, if it said "member," we'd be excluding all members, and that is undesirable. But let's go back to what the rest of the amendment says. Like, the context of this amendment is that there's a list of eight representatives. Each time it says, "one representative of the rural area, one representative of Kingston West, one representative of Kingston Central, et cetera, et cetera, one representative of Kedco, one representative of the business community, but no representatives of a local or community group need apply." That's how it reads. It may not read that in public notice, but that's how it reads here tonight. It says "one representative," and so the person from, I don't know, the institutional community, is there representing St. Lawrence College, or whatever. That's what they're there to do. They would be sent by the administration to represent the interests of the institution. So, you know, a member of a community association could theoretically join this group if this amendment doesn't pass, but they wouldn't be able to represent their community association? I mean, you know, I don't think that's how it would work in reality, and I see no need to antagonize the great citizens of this city that are engaged. Coincidentally, we're talking about engagement framework in this very same meeting, and we're gonna vote in a very narrow policy that says we want exactly eight representatives from exactly these eight groups, and they're all representatives, but we don't want representatives from these other types of groups. Sounds very prejudiced to me, and I wholeheartedly support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. I think councillor Stroud's argument works. It works. It makes, it points out there's a certain lack of logic here. And that logic works back the other way, too. You have one representative of the business community, so how are you gonna rive at that representative? Well, it could be somebody who applied, but they might be on the executive of the DBIA or the Chamber of Commerce. So now, who are they representing? You can't get around that kind of thing. And so the same thing with representatives of the First Peoples. Are they a member of the Katarakwe Native Association, or are they not? Okay? It just goes on and on. It's, I think, I think that it's best not to go here. And just eliminated, people will apply, the, we're gonna have a mandate from the clerk that says, this is what we're looking for, and the nominations committee usually looks after these things. But it's better not to start off on the wrong foot. So that, I would suggest, support the amendment, it'll all get cleared up in the end without putting any noses out of joint. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Councillor O'Sannick, you have the- Sanik, you have the last word?
Thanks. My intent is just to have as many people apply as they want to, and to have to get out the dictionary and look up what exactly representative is versus a member of is. That's not the intent that I want to go out there for this, for this committee. So I'm still supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to two. On the clause as amended, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Neal?
Yes, just a couple of questions. Um, the, and one quick question to the clerk, if I can. All of our committees, as I understand it by the committee bylaw, even if it says quarterly, uh, that a, a meeting can be called at the call of the chair if the chair feels, uh, there's an important issue that's come up. Is that accurate?
Through your worship, thank you for the question. Yes, that is correct. It's also included within the mandate of this particular committee also.
And like other advisory committees, this will have clerk support?
Uh, no.
It won't?
Through your worship, no, this will not have clerk support. It will be functioning through the planning department.
Okay. Uh, will it have planning department support on hand? I'm assuming it would.
And, yes, it will.
Thank you. Um, and I did ask this question of, uh, the director earlier today. This was something that came up, oh, two and a half, three years ago, as a recommendation, a requirement under the Planning Act. Um, is there a reason it's taken till now to come forward with a recommendation? Because I also think it falls into the category that Counselor Allen, uh, I moved a motion, Counselor Allen seconded it some time ago, to have a more, uh, open and engaging planning process. So I, so I applaud the intent of this. I'm just curious about the timing.
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. So it's true that the original piece of legislation that brought through some of these ideas went through legislature in 2015. The, uh, the legislation and the enacting piece of this actually wasn't in effect until July 1st, 2016. So from that standpoint, it would seem like we're about a year behind. But in actuality, based on the structure of our committees that are already in effect, what the legislation speaks to is municipalities can have a committee that has members of the public, that has a quasi-judicial function and looks at planning matters, which our Heritage Committee would also already meet the criteria of that. So in that piece alone, we could have been satisfied that we met our legislative requirement. But what we decided as staff is that, given our commitment to public consultation, open government, accountability and transparency, that we wanted to go with something that would be, um, different from what other municipalities are doing, something that would be a significant enhancement from what other municipalities are doing and would truly position us as a municipal leader in this respect. So we took some additional time to look at what we thought would be a working group that would provide the function of the legislation, but also provide a much enhanced experience for citizen feedback, public engagement, in a, in the type of form that we are hearing from the sessions that we are doing. And from the timing standpoint, we also wanted to bring this forward concurrently with the recommendations on the enhancements to the public participation in the Planning Act process as it relates to development applications, and that's also on the agenda tonight for council. So we were bringing them forward together so that council would have the opportunity of seeing the enhancements that we've suggested in terms of the Planning Act process, but also, um, what we're suggesting now in terms of this report with a working group, committee structure as well.
And, um, something you said earlier kind of gave me pause, so I'm going to ask about this. When I first read this, I thought, uh, that this would be indeed, uh, an advisory committee to the planning committee, so that recommendations, uh, could indeed come forward to the planning committee and then on to council. Uh, you suggested that it would be going through staff and staff would be bringing recommendations to planning. Did I misread what you were saying?
Thank you, and through you. So this group would be working collaboratively with staff. It'll be led by staff, similar to the structure that we have for working groups with Heritage Committee, and the work of this working group will flow in through to planning committee, not directly go to council.
Yeah. So, so any recommendations that come out of a majority decision of this committee, those recommendations will come to the planning committee?
Um, no, that's not actually, I just want to be clear. So this is a working group. It's not going to be making legis-, uh, legislative decisions and it's not going to be making recommendations similar to what planning committee does. Plan-, planning committee has different stature. Um, and perhaps a clerk can help me clarify this a little bit more, but it will be a working group that feeds into planning committee, but doesn't have legislative decision-making authority, similar to planning committee.
Mr. Clerk?
Through, through your worship, if you take like Exhibit A, that's attached to the report, it basically says that the planning advisory working group is not a decision-making committee of council, and it is not responsible in any way for the review of any development applications made pursuant to the Planning Act. That also goes on to say that the group itself, the activity is going to be reported through to the planning committee through the circulation of meeting notes and other summarized information through staff reports. So this committee is not set up as a decision-making body whatsoever.
I appreciate that, and I, and I did read the report, and I, I recognize that it's not a decision-making. But if it's truly advisory, it's advisory to who? It would be advisory to the decision-making group, which in this case, it would be the planning committee. So I guess my concern is if everything is the only thing that they're advising is staff, and staff can choose to inform planning committee or not, that there's a recommendation or, then I'm a little troubled, uh, by that, because I think, I know that our planning committee meetings are very long and we don't need them to be any longer, but there should be some opportunity, if it's truly advisory, working group, to bring, to flag ideas to the body that does make the decision, which is planning, and then, and then on to, uh, on to the council.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the intent is to have this working group provide advice to staff, and I understand right now councillors are expressing concern that they do not feel that staff will necessarily bring the information forward, which I think is a different issue that we probably need to address in a different way, if that's the concern of councillors. Um, the, the real, I guess, point here is one where what we're proposing is something similar, if you recall, North Kingston. So there's a working group for North Kingston, and I'm sure that councillors can appreciate that if staff didn't bring forward some critical information on North Kingston, the information would have came forward in some way anyways, through the members of the public. And I would like to think that councillors feel or have a certain level of comfort that staff can actually work with citizens and residents and bring forward information that's critical, and I think that's what's being proposed here. Um, having said that, you know, the, the information that staff will look at from this working group will be one of the source of, um, engagement. It will not be the only one. So keeping in mind that, from a staff perspective, we will still want to engage the community associations. We will still want to engage a number of other stakeholders in the community. The intent is not to replace all of these other bodies in the community with one working group that has the overall say, um, for the entire community. But it is definitely a group that staff can work with to really get some advice on some of the critical policy issues, being official plan or zoning, um, bylaw consolidations, for example.
Great. Just, um, a question, if I could, to, to the planning staff. Will there be minutes kept and would the minutes be shared with the planning committee?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. So, um, that is embedded in the mandate and the report that there will be minutes that are going to be brought forward to planning committees, similar to what we do with the working group minutes from Heritage Committee. So we're, we're borrowing, borrowing that from a structure that already works now, and that's how the information will be conveyed forward. As well as when staff are bringing a report to planning committee, there's always thoughtful considerations in sections of the comprehensive reports that, where we're detailing out the type of input that's been received and how it's been reflected in our recommendations, so that as well will be reflected in information that goes to planning committee.
Thank you. Um, I will be supporting, as amended, the proposal. I guess, I know that there has been frustration in the past, sometimes with Heritage, sometimes with KEIF, that as advisory committees, they haven't always felt that their advice has been sought or, uh, shared with, with, uh, council or with planning committee. So I'm hopeful that this, there will be, uh, true advisory, uh, going on, and the working group can see their DNA in some decisions that are being made by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to clause four? Counselor Stroud?
Thanks, Your Worship. Um, so first of all, I, I chaired the Heritage Committee, and we have three working groups, and they're all actually functioning fairly well right now. Uh, and so I'm looking at that model as a successful model that we should try to emulate with this. With the, with the obvious difference that this is mandated by the province by Bill 73, so we have to do it. And, and staff has, has come for a real report to try to tell us how they think we should do it. Great. I actually commend Commissioner Hurdle and Director Agnew on the work in this, and I agree with everything in the report, except for the amendment that already passed, which took care of that aspect, because I thought that was unnecessary exclusion, I've been over that. There's another problem, though, and that is that this is eight members, which I think is the right number, by the way. I think eight's a good number. It's a working number. Uh, any bigger than that, it would be, become unwieldy. But we've prescribed exactly where those eight members are to come from, and that's arbitrary. We've done that arbitrarily. Staff has done this arbitrarily. If we pass it tonight, we're participating in that arbitrary decision that those exact eight groups are the ones that we want to put on this committee. Uh, we weren't actually consulted until now about that point. Uh, I'm going to borrow a quote from my esteemed colleague, veteran Counselor George, about getting in the kitchen. So that would, that was in reference to us getting in the kitchen about staff's, staff's work and telling staff how to do their work, micromanaging staff's work, which we shouldn't be doing. But this is sort of the same way, but this is staff getting into the community's kitchen, telling the community, uh, what, what members of the community they want to see at their advisory working group. Now, the other side of the coin is, is, I can hear some of you thinking about this already. If we don't prescribe it somewhat, we don't know what we're going to get. We're going to get a hodgepodge of applications and nominations, and, and the end result might be a dysfunctional committee. And that's a valid point. However, we've got open government as one of our priorities for the first time in the city of Kingston. It's one of our six strategic priorities. Open government is based on principles, democratic principles. And you, you can't reconcile having all eight slots on an advisory group prescribed by staff who are not elected by the people. You can't reconcile that with open government. It's impossible. If it was only four recommended technical representatives like we have on some of the other committees, that's probably fine. The best four out of this list of eight probably could have made the cut. That would have been fine by me. But have all eight with no open slots is very prescriptive, very much getting in the kitchen. And what I think the easiest thing to do and the simplest thing to do is to just have eight open slots. Sure, one of them can be from First Nations. In fact, I recommend that, and I'm on nominations, I'll be pushing for that. Some of these others, like the rural area, that needs to probably be in there, too. Nominations isn't stupid. Nomination knows how to get representative committees. So I'd be pushing for that at nominations as well. But all eight, like narrowly defined like this, is a bad idea as a, as a sitting member of the nominations committee. I'm going to have a really hard time squeezing eight qualified top-notch candidates into those eight boxes. So my amendment speaks to this, and I don't know if the clerks have had time to put it up. It's the same as Counselor Sanik's amendment, except that it deletes the eight slot descriptions. So leaving it just eight members, but to be determined by the nominations committee, essentially. So this is what it would look like.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Osannick. Uh, okay, so essentially deletes all of the prescribed, um, individual representatives and just replaces that with eight members of the public, who are not employees of the city of Kingston or members of council. Okay, so that's seconded by Counselor Osannick. Anyone who wishes to speak to the amendment only, please. Counselor Neal?
Yeah, I, I support the amendment. I know that, uh, when we sometimes advertise for other, uh, uh, nominations for other committees, uh, we often mention certain skill attributes or, or aspects that we're looking for. And, and, uh, the mover is absolutely right. When I was on, uh, when I was on the nominations committee, we always looked at finding a broad representation from across the city, geographic. We were very conscious of making sure that, that, uh, the rural area was represented. And, and so I think, without being prescriptive, we can still achieve, uh, the goals that were intended by that very prescriptive list. And, and so I'll, I will support the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, first I question staff regarding the, I think it was a working group, um, that was put together for the school site acquisition process, essentially the, to, when school sites were coming available. Uh, it wa-, it didn't last very long, but if you could just, first of all, remind me, was it a working group? And I, I do recall that it had geographical, um, spots as the composition of that committee. If anyone has that information, it'd be good.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, it was a working group, uh, that was providing, again, advice to staff, and it was, uh, there was, uh, representation from different areas of the community that was identified. We did have to go back, I think, out, um, a couple of times to make sure that we could recruit people from all across the city. So basically the rural area, and I know in the east, it was a bit of a challenge as well to get some representation. So we did go back, but at the end of the day, we were able to, to make sure that we got representation from across the city.
Thanks. Um, so I guess what I liked about that, although it was a difficult thing at the time to look at, um, trying to get, I think people were having discussions around that, and saying that people from certain areas would be looking out for their own interests or for the interests of their areas, and having that geographical representation would not necessarily be good. And, um, I remember thinking at the time that it, that that, of course, is what we have to do here at this council table, and we have to always sort of look at the geographic, the interests of a geographical area and look at the broader interests as well, and that it is probably a good, or perhaps, a good experience for members of the public to be in that position. Um, so initially, I was okay with the list as provided in terms of the geographical areas, even though the north of the city is lumped in with the central urban area. Um, because of that same, I think even, it's more, even more important with a group that's working on planning issues to, and advising staff and therefore eventually council, that that group have a geographical representation so that they can understand how to work together, uh, within the broader context. Have, so having, but having said that, I think, um, as a number of my colleagues So having, but having said that, I think as a number of my colleagues have mentioned, the nominations advisory committee does, if we get enough submissions, we do tend to do a pretty good job of meeting those geographical requirements or sort of dealing with them on our own. So I would like to see that we have that type of geographic diversity, but regardless, I don't think it needs to be prescribed, so I will support the amendment.
Thank you. Counsel Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. This is not, this is not a new practice. What staff have presented to us, this has become quite common because it works. This is what we did for the working group for the Kingston Penitentiary Visioning. This is what we did for the North Kingston Visioning. This is what we do because it works. You prescribe diversity. We do that all the time. We say diversity is important, so we're going to pause, put a policy in place to ensure diversity. I, I think that it's a great idea. I think, as has been said, you ensure that you have a diverse group of people, A, so that every part of the city and different groups feel that they're represented, and B, if there are certain issues that may apply to the rural area or to the east area or to the west, then that person is able to specifically speak to them. This is a working group. We know from experience, this is what works best, so I see no reason to deviate from it. So for that reason, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support the amendment. But, but I do think that the nominations committee will be able to, to do that work and if we find that we just can't get representation for a certain individual or a certain group that's represented, then we can always revisit this. But if it's worked before, I just don't see why we would want to deviate from it. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I won't be supporting the amendment. Considering the incredible interest that the public has in planning, in a broad way, I don't think there will be much problem filling this, this committee with people from across the various areas that have been asked. And I, I think it's more important to me that all the city feels represented. And I think that's what this does prescribe. And all the parts of the city, institutional, economic development and business, those are the big pillars of the city. All the, the parts of the city have at times reason to feel left out and of course, the indigenous community very much so. So I suspect there'll be a lot of applications, so I don't think there'll be a problem filling the committee as, as the list shows, so I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to the amendment? Counsel Hutchinson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree with the previous two speakers, actually, that the representation for democratic purposes and maintaining diversity is really important. Especially planning affects everybody in the city, even if it's not in their district, it sometimes really affects them. So the, they may work there or their mother lives there or whatever, right? Or their business is there. There's lots of reasons. So that's one reason why I think it's good that staff have attempted to, you know, cover some of the major points of, of sources of interest, pretty broadly in some ways here, but still it's a reasonable attempt. The, and I just think that, I understand where this is coming from because I've been on nominations when it hasn't worked, right? And we've gone back to the public and we've gone back to the public. And sometimes it looks like the mandate for whatever it is going to be is not going to be fulfilled because you can't meet because you don't have the people. Now, last time, as Commissioner said, did work out eventually, but it was, I remembered it was kind of touch and go. So I won't vote for this amendment and then I'll try another one, okay? That may split the difference, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else to the amendment? Counsel Strad, you have the last word.
Okay. I did want to have the discussion, I want to have an open session because I believe that, as I said before, open government's very important to us as a council and even though it's well intentioned, having all eight slots reserved like this is not consistent. However, there's some merit to what Counsel Hutchinson just said and what's most important about these, these various descriptors, some of them stand out. I mentioned this before. So representative of the rural area actually stands out as very valid because if we don't put it at that in there, that might actually get unintentionally overlooked, which has happened many times in the past with the rural area. So that's, it's possible. And I didn't want to split hairs, which is why I made it simple. I just said, take them all out and let nominations, trust nominations to do their job. However, I would be okay if some of these were left in. I don't believe it's a complete list that does represent diversity. I don't think that's possible in a list of eight. And because it's not possible in a list of eight and because you can't cut the baby in half, nominations has a difficult job of balancing the committee based on many variables. Anyone who's sat on nominations knows how that is. It will be, you can't, you won't be able to do your job with, with this, this narrow descriptor. The fact that it was attempted with North Kingston and Kingston Pen Visioning, as Your Worship mentioned, may be true that it, it was done that way, but there was bad, there was a lot of feedback in the community about how the fix seemed to be in in some of those, some of those groups because of the weighting was not, was not representative of the city as, as a whole. It was, it was representative of some of the special interest groups, actually. And that's what this does as well, especially the last three bullets. So as far as the, the west, central and east descriptors go, I mean, we can do that as a nomination committee guaranteed. We can make sure that it's geographically representative. We can commit to the rural area. First peoples probably need to be there, we can do that as well. I see no need to write it all out, though. As long as we have a gentleman's agreement to not leave anyone behind, we can get there a lot easier without the narrowness of this. But most importantly, it sends a message to the community that everybody is welcome, whether you're part of the business community or the institutional committee or not. You're, you're welcome to apply for the committee. If, if we leave this as is, there will be people in Kingston that can't apply because they're not a member of any of those groups. So, you know, or someone else more worthy from their particular geographical area gets chosen and that rules them out because there's only one. So it's a bad idea. I'm strongly opposed to this idea, especially the precedent that it sets, especially in the light of Your Worship's comments. It is command and control mentality, it's not open government. The two are not compatible. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on the motion to amend. And that loses by a vote of five to six. So we have the clause, the first amendment has passed, it is still on the floor. Counsel Cannon. So you need to move a motion of reconsideration. Well. Okay, so that has been with, that has been with Gerard. So we still have the clause on the floor. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak that has now already spoken? Counsel Hutchinson?
Thank you, Worship. So I'm going to try my little amendment here, try to split the difference. Okay. See if people think this is, this works, otherwise I'm fine with what's there. So after the words, then who represent the following areas or interests would be added according to the following guidelines, colon, and then it will be up to nominations to try and fill the slots. They can't fill the slots, they take the next best person who's qualified, who doesn't happen to belong to one of those groups or more likely does but has qualifications. So that outweigh other people. This is the way it works anyway. And so we've also done this in nominations.
So, so I think I'll stop you there. Try to get that motion to amend in writing first, please, and then you can speak to it. So, so Counsel Hutchinson, so...
I'm done.
Okay. So in my, in my estimation, what you're proposing to change into guidelines is effectively the same as what Counsel Strad's amendment was. Because you're removing any of the restrictions, you're basically passing advice to the nominations advisory committee. That is essentially the same as what we were saying before, that we're removing that, that mandate.
Respond, please. I don't think it is because it limits, just as it was objected to, but not by me. There are categories. And if you say you have to consider that they're going to be considered according to the following guidelines, then the first and primary responsibility of the nominations committee is to fill those slots. If the nominations don't allow them to do it, you're giving them a way out to continue on so the businesses in the city can continue and hopefully that doesn't happen again, right?
So I, I understand your intent, but the word guideline does not allow for that intent. So the other, because a guideline does not put that in force. So my recommendation is, as Chair, so we've talked about this item for the last hour. My recommendation is that if council is still not satisfied with this, that we defer it and then you can propose some new wording at our, at our next meeting. Because we have a lot of other things on our agenda and my concern is that we could spend another half hour to an hour wordsmithing this. So Counsel Hutchinson, if you'd like to, to put forward a motion to defer then to the next meeting, then that's in order.
Okay, I'll make a motion to defer to the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Holland. Okay, motion to defer is with respect to time or place. Is there any debate? So we will call the vote then on the motion to defer. And that carries by a vote of nine to two. Onto report number 98 from the CAO.
Moved by Counsel Hutchinson, seconded by Counsel O'Sannick, that report number 98 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So there are two clauses. Clause number one, Kingston Penitentiary Tours 2018. We will call the vote. And that carries. Clause two, proposed Kingston electric vehicle strategy. Counsel Hutchinson?
Thank you, Worship. I just want to thank staff for bringing this forward. This really follows on numbers of meetings we've had, especially at the EITP meeting, committee about electric cars and vehicle strategy and, and stations for electrical fueling. And so I really want to, I think that, and this really works well, in my view, into the city's goals of sustainability in terms of the environment and the economy. I did have a couple of questions. One was, in the target area one on page 53, the, it talks about the, the issues of replacement of vehicles. And I'm wondering how it's different from the previous process? Because to me, it reads more or less the same, but it might be a bit stronger. And I'm just wondering how the commissioner is thinking about this? Because we've had this, a type of policy to go towards greener vehicles for a number of years. And I know the technology's getting better, so it's easier to do maybe.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, that target area one where we're actually in, we've already initiated some of this, but proposing to start changing our fleet to electric where feasible, recognizing that there are some vehicles that are currently not available in terms of, in electric format. So where feasible, that's what we're proposing to do and yes, the, the technology has changed significantly in the past few years and to be quite honest, I expect that the technology will continue to improve. So what you're seeing in your report in, you know, three, four years from now could be very different in terms of the type of electric vehicles that, that we're looking at.
So what I get from that is previously, we considered bringing in greener vehicles and now we've got a commitment to change the fleet. Would that be correct?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. That's correct. We have a commitment to start changing the fleet. We have, actually, council has already approved the report, I think it was a couple of months ago, to give us additional budget to initiate the change in, in certain vehicles from the regular gasoline vehicle to electric. So we are already doing that, yes.
Thank you. Another question is, we discussed the city ITP at some length, oh, I don't know, a couple of years ago or more. It had to do with the, the, the stations where people take on electricity and that there are different plugs for different types of cars. Like Tesla has one plug and Volt has another. And I'm wondering if we've, I, I know that on the technical side, staff have thought about this at, at Kingston Hydro, but I'm wondering if this underlies this, this report, that we're taking into account that we could end up with a stranded asset if we picked the wrong plug? Or are we going to have technology that will be adaptable to various plugs?
Mr. Hingabas?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you. The charging stations that we'd be installing would be usable by all cars directly other than the Tesla car. And my understanding is that Tesla also has an adapter that they can use in Tesla-specific charging stations as well as they can use an adapter to use other, the other type of charger, which is compatible with all other vehicles right now and on the commercial market.
That's great to hear because it was a technical issue a few years ago. So it, that means we're not endangered by doing what I think is probably the right thing. So I'll just say that, that I got an email from someone today, which went back to a couple of people that were copied on, or other members of council, about why we were spending money to help people who could afford electrical cars and, you know, why we were resubsidizing that. And my response was much is that the change is taking place really quickly. It's still relatively small. I think it's, according to The Economist, about 750,000 units a year of electrical vehicles, but growing. And that the forms of batteries, you know, lithium ion batteries and that are much better, more powerful, charge longer and that, so this is coming and it's good to see that we're sort of, for a mid-sized city, we're right on the edge of this and we are making ourselves open to those from, especially larger centers that would want to come here and pass through here and keeping, keeping ourselves on the economic and environmental map. This is a really good initiative. Yes, it does cost us some money upfront, but I'm quite sure... Yes, it does cost us some money upfront, but I'm quite sure that Kingston Hydro realizes the future will be in charging electricity, and frankly, that electricity will come from Kingston Hydro. And so, people will be paying into our utility, and that will cover our costs over time. And I think it pretty much indicates in here that the cost factor is not that onerous because of different elements. So, I think this is a really good initiative, and I'd be more than happy to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Yes, I too support the motion before us. I think staff have done an excellent job. I just want to point out, so everybody's aware, that the bulk of this is coming from our environmental reserve fund, and that the two-year period for operating budget electricity is coming from a working fund reserve. So, this will not impact our tax rate directly in the next fiscal years ahead. Already, car manufacturers are taking strides. Volvo have announced that by, I can't remember, 2019 or 2020, that all of their vehicles, they will stop, no longer be having gas or diesel-operated vehicles solely. They'll be hybrids or electric cars. GM has made a similar commitment in the near future, and so I think we're on the cutting edge here. And if we truly believe ourselves to be in the vanguard of innovation, I think this is a good first move. And I have to say, I know, I've been a scold about every time I heard somebody say Kingston, Canada's most sustainable city. This makes that statement far less cringe-worthy than it has been in the past. This is moving us towards that ultimate goal, and so I totally support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. For someone that's not on the Environmental Infrastructure Transportation Committee, this report has been a crash course in electric vehicles. And with that, I do have a question. So, level-one charging stations, those are for electric wheelchairs, scooters, e-bikes. So, level-two and level-three, they're both for cars? It's just level-three is more sophisticated than level-two? Is that right?
Yes, through you. The, that's correct. Level-one is a very low voltage, and it takes quite a significant amount of time to charge a vehicle, but can do the smaller vehicles, I guess, a scooter, wheelchair, much more quickly. Level-two is two hundred and twenty volt. It can charge a car in a reasonable amount of time, a couple hours or more, whereas a level-three is a significantly faster upgraded charger that can do a full charge, and anywhere from twenty minutes to an hour, depending on the current level of the vehicle. So, much more expensive to use and to implement the city, but it is a very convenient, very fast charge.
And the concerns I heard today around town is the price of that one million dollars, even though it's from the reserve fund and, you know, not from new tax dollars from the reserve funds, is still a million dollars, right? Like, just under eight hundred thousand, and then the eighty-two thousand for the two years of supplying free level-one and level-two chargers? So, I just wondered, like, we had some emails today and, you know, examples of what the charging stations look like in Montreal, for example, but that's a very large city. For our comparator cities, are they also spending a million dollars? Like, how's this going to compare Kingston to our comparator cities? Do we know?
Mr. Higginbotham. Commissioner Hurdle. Mr. Higginbotham.
Through you. We don't have a lot of data on comparator cities, other than knowing that there are, we are behind in some cities we've heard, such as the Whitby-Ashby area, and others that have installed public stations before now. The investment may be offset by grant funding. We have a recommendation in here for staff to be able to apply for a number of funds, from our own fleet charging stations to the public stations and more potentially. Don't know the success, the possibility of success, but that would help lower the cost. And as mentioned earlier, the technology is getting better and more improved every day, and there is potential that future stations or these could go down in price as we install.
Commissioner Hurdle? Sorry.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add, and councillor Neil made the point earlier about the Environment Reserve Fund, and that reserve fund was set up to be able to support some of these initiatives. So, the funds that are collected and set aside, that's exactly the type of initiatives in terms of helping to reduce the greenhouse gases, right, emissions. So, on top of the grant application and potential partnership with the province, I think it's important to understand that, as was explained earlier, this is not something that's going to impact the budget that you're going to receive for 2018, nineteen, and for 2020, the only impacts would be around the operations. But that's something, again, when we have more data, we can bring information to council. There will be fees, obviously, that will be related to the usage of these stations. Level-three will have fees the first year, and level-one and two, we are proposing it should be free for the first two years, and then fees should be implemented after that.
And thank you. And my last question is, so regarding the price, like, the one million dollars that's being proposed, is this the first time the price has come? Like, this report hasn't already been to EIT committee and then fed to council? This is a recommend report? So, this is the first time that the public has seen the one million dollars? It was on the front page of the newspaper, and then I heard it on the radio today, and that's it? Is that correct?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, it is, it is the first time that this report comes forward, and the reason why it's coming to council, there are a few reasons. One is, we do need council's approval of the strategy and direction in order to be able to apply for grant funding, because we do need a council resolution in order to be able to do that. And the second part is that council has the authority to approve budget, so that's why we are bringing this to council. But I think councillor Hutchinson mentioned earlier that this strategy is really bringing elements of a number of plans that council have already approved, and I think have been wanting to see move forward in the past few years. So, we're hoping that council sees this in going in that direction in terms of our, especially our climate action plan.
Okay, thank you. And just the last question, is there a deadline for the grant funding? Like, if I try to defer this to EIT committee, just in case there is public input into this report that wants to be heard, would that miss a deadline for the grant funding?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, to be quite honest, in terms, because there are various grant programs that I know are available that the city can look into, and I don't have the actual deadline for applications, so I don't have the answer to that question.
Your Worship, I think I will try to move that amendment, just to defer it to the next EIT committee, which would probably be the November meeting, since EIT is next week, unless it can, it probably can't get on the agenda, but...
Okay, just...
To allow for public input and consideration, just in case there's anything else out here, based on what I've heard today.
Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? So, there's no reason why it can't go to the next EITP meeting? The report is already prepared and ready to go. So, the motion to defer would then just be to defer this item to the next DITP meeting for opportunities for further discussion or public consultation? Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion to defer? Seconded by councillor Stroud? Okay. Debate is with respect to time or place. Councillor Stroud?
I just want to point out, the next DITP meeting is a week today, and then, I'm sure the result of that could come back to the following council meeting on, a week later, I believe, because the report's already done.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak? So, we will call the vote then on the motion to defer. And that loses by a vote of five to six. So, anybody else that wishes to speak? Actually, next on my list is councillor Osterhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a lot of thoughts on this topic, sort of in my realm, but of interest, but I also was contacted by more than several constituents with concerns. I like the discussion. It does clarify some of the things to me. And I understand that's the direction we want to go, but I still think it's a lot of money, and it could be used for other purposes. I'd rather see private funds support it, but is that it? The twenty-five locations? My question is, is that the locations? Are we going to continue our investment? Or is that, like, seed money? Like, what are we, are we, can we say that that's it?
Mr. Higginbotham.
So, with the public charging stations, they are interactive, of course, to be set up for payment. So, what that means is data can be collected, and with the installation of these charging stations, we'll know how often they're used. Even during the pilot, we can have access to data, and that data can be used to base staff recommendations and council decisions in the future on further investment or movement of a station that's not being used in one location and provided to a new location or an existing one that needs more. So, those are future decisions and recommendations, but can be based on data from these stations.
Okay, that's interesting. Also, though, there's obviously the costs, like, there is a load on the grid. These are not just simply, this is not an easy thing for our grid to absorb, and maybe you can explain some of that. There's a lot of load here, a lot of electrical infrastructure, and how is the city positioned for that? Are there actually hidden costs? Because people probably don't understand the amount of energy that is required.
So, yes, the system's set up for payment, so from a cost perspective, we're proposing a pilot program for that, but the costs are potentially recoverable in the future, and right away with the level-three charging stations. Yes, we know that Kingston Hydro and Hydro One will continually need to assess and track the evolution of electric vehicles. Right now, it's relatively modest, as stated earlier, the number of vehicles on the road and the number of charging stations at what we project the use will be at the beginning. But it is part of the strategy and the initiatives that the power providers need to assess the grid and what the impact this will have going forward.
Yes. I didn't read in there that there is, so the plan is to have metering. I find it that people don't pay initially, you know, I'm not sure the free ride makes sense to me. So, but it's written in there, I missed that, and they will be paying within two years. People will pull up to a meter, and they're paying for the charge, correct? And we can recover some costs.
Correct. So, the proposal here is for the level-three charging stations, which are the very fast chargers, that there'd be charge, there'd be fees associated right away from day one.
Right away.
Yeah. The level-two chargers, which take significantly longer time than level-three, but do provide a good charge if you're parking for several hours or for a day, would be in a pilot program for two years. If the charging station is located in a lot that requires payment for parking, those parking fees still apply, but the use of the power itself out of the charger is free to encourage the use of these chargers in the first two years.
That bothers me, but I think that's too long, but, okay.
Next on my list is councillor McClellan.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful idea. It's really a long-term vision that we have, we're starting to start here for the entire city, and for, in fact, the entire world. I see this as a need to invest into the future. We are going to have electrical vehicles coming soon. And in fact, just today's Globe and Mail, GM has announced an all-electric future by 2023. That means no more gas-powered cars coming out of GM. This has already been said by Volvo. They plan to have all-electric or hybrid cars by 2019. Audi has promised thirty percent of their sales by 2025. Dahmer, formerly Dahmer Chrysler, has also expanded, and they want by 2022 to have ten electrical vehicles in their lineup. BMW expects this year alone to sell a hundred thousand electrical vehicles. But it's not only companies, it's also governments. China announced plans to mandate all electrical cars. Now, this is important, because I lived in Asia for nine years, and they have a real smog problem. And when the biggest growing market in the world, China, is saying that they will want to have only electrical cars in the near future, it's going to happen, all right? The Dutch parliament, just earlier this, or just last year, said that they want to get rid of all gas and diesel cars by 2025. India has said so in June by 2030. India, this is like the second-most populous country in the world. They're asking for electrical cars only in twelve years. In June, Norway also claimed that they wanted only electrical cars by 2025. France has said by 2040, and so has Britain, but Scotland is doing Britain one better, because they're doing it by 2032. These are governments and institutions and companies that see this as the future. And if we're going to get into it now, it's important to start the infrastructure small, especially with grant money, not with taxes, because that's what we're getting right now. And it's a marketing strategy when you offer something for free first. That's what they're doing with pilot projects, with our bicycles and lots of other things. This is good business sense, and it's positive non-tax revenue in the future, within two years, right? This is what we're sort of looking for, is a new utility that cities don't offer. Petroleum is a dying industry in the sense that these countries and these companies are going into electrical vehicles. If you have a gas station today, that money is going to Saudi Arabia. Imagine if that money is staying here in our community? That's economic development. This is a force for good and for the benefit of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Stroud.
Let's get her done.
Thank you. Thank you for those short and to-the-point comments. Councillor Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, I recognize you.
Thank you. So, one of the key things that I see in the wording of this motion is, it says that we approve up to certain amount. So, it suggests to me that we are taking steps, that we are willing to put this infrastructure in place, but that we are providing for allowances for private money and for money and grants from other levels of government to be able to come in and fill in the gaps. And I think that that's the key. You can't apply for grants until you actually have something tangible that you can present. So, I see this just as a first step, to be able to attract that kind of investment here to Kingston. So, I do not, and I think that councillor Osterhoff said it well, I don't think anyone's suggesting that this isn't a good idea, but the question is, who's going to pay for it? And so, the way I see it is that, really, this is us taking a step forward, but this is not in any way the municipality is saying that we're going to fit the bill for this, because we don't fit the bill for traditional fueling stations. We shouldn't be setting that precedent for electric ones either. This is just a step forward to be able to set that process in motion. On that point, one of the most expensive elements of this is the level-three charging stations. And so, one in particular at the Invista Centre, I'm seeing as more geared to commuters that would be traveling from Toronto to Montreal, rather than necessarily just Kingstonians. So, on that point, a question for staff, is there any interest from the province in partnering on level-three charging station, like at... like at the Invista Centre?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you and through you. So yes, we have had various conversations with the Ministry of Transportation and they have identified an interest in partnering for a level three station at a location in the West End, whether it's at Invista Centre and potentially another location in that area.
Thank you. So we already have now an indication, this isn't just applying for a grant, we've now actually heard that the province wants to partner, and that means bring money to the table to help offset this. So the dollar value will be less than what's spelled out in the motion. So when I see that, then I'm comfortable that this is not going to be on the back of the city, that this is going to be us taking a step and we'll attract the right kind of investment through. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Okay, so is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, so we will call the vote on clause two. And that carries. Onto report number 99 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 99 from the Planning Committee for council's consideration. Thanks.
Moved by councillor Schall, seconded by councillor Neil, that report number 99 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Okay, so we will vote on them as a whole. Clause one is approval of an application for zoning by law amendment 672 Division Street. Clause two, approval of an application for zoning by law amendment 235 Montreal Street. Clause three, public participation in the planning approvals process, comprehensive And that carries. Report number 100 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
It's my privilege to provide counsel with the report number 100 from the Administrative Policies Committee duly moved and seconded.
Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Osannick, that report number 100 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are six clauses. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Councillor Osannick?
Clause three, please.
Clause three, councillor McLaren, and six. Any other separations? Clause four. Okay, so first we will vote on the balance. Clause one is tax write-offs pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001. Clause two, delegation of power to the Assessment Review Board under section 357 of the Municipal Act 2001. Clause five, City of Kingston video surveillance policy amendments. And that carries. Clause three, first capital place illumination policy. Councillor Osannick?
Thank you, your worship. First of all, the new laser lights at City Hall, they look fantastic. Anyone who saw them over Canada Day weekend, when it was the big unveiling of them, you know, so many people were taking pictures all throughout that weekend and the rest of the summer during our different festivals that we had. So at Administration Policies Committee, we do have the list of all the dates, it's on page 79 in our report, as to when we're going to be using the colored laser lights. And looking back at that report, I know I didn't raise this at the committee, but thinking about it, I just wanted through you, your worship, as staff, about the Christmas season, you know, so near the end of December, when there's lots of different holidays being celebrated, is it possible to shine, you know, blue lights and do we need, or some other color? And do we need to actually move that as an amendment? Because it's not actually on that list of items on there.
Mr. Wigginton?
Through you, your worship. Just to clarify that the list of scheduled dates that are identified under 3.1.3 are specific to one-time illumination, so they are connected as much as possible to what we as staff are recommending as an inclusive list of dates for the community to mark. In terms of what you're referring to, in terms of a longer illumination period in relation to something like the holiday season, the way the policy is worded, there is the possibility that staff can take that discretion. And something that we saw when we started to inaugurate the lighting system this past summer was we got a lot of positive feedback, both from residents and visitors to Kingston, that they liked the opportunity to see the building illuminated in ways that were more celebratory and drew attention to the downtown. And so what we took from that feedback is that particularly during peak, sort of tourist time, but also at seasonal times like the holidays, that we would as staff have the opportunity to illuminate City Hall for multiple days. And what you're referring to in terms of the holiday season, is that something that we've already been looking at and trying to do it in a way that does not, or provide an emphasis on a particular denomination or holiday celebration and is much more inclusive of the community? So from a policy point of view, I don't see the need necessarily to add that as one of the designated dates for illumination, but certainly that feedback you're providing is helpful for us as we plan.
Excellent. I look forward to seeing that in December then. Thanks very much for that clarification. Now I understand this, based on, from the email from today, now I understand your explanation a lot better, so thank you. The other holiday I just wanted to ask for is St. Patrick's Day, which would be like that list that we have here on page 79. It would be like a one-day-only, and that, of course, is March 17th. And I know that you gave me an explanation of St. Patrick's Day, but the rest of council didn't hear it, so Mr. Wigginton, if you could just like say that again, that would be great.
Through you, your worship, I'm happy to answer that question. As we were doing the research and working with the public to solicit their input, a big source of reference for us was federal documents that deal with days of observance across Canada and things that are of particular importance at the community level. And so the lists that you see before you are things that we identified based on other best practices as well as the federal observances across the country to try and put together a list that was somewhat equally spread across the year, as well as being inclusive a number of different cultural groups. And our feeling was that St. Patrick's Day, for all of its profile, was perhaps not as significant as some of these other days. And also, once you start to get into observing a specific culture, in this case, the Irish, does that open a precedence for other cultural groups wanting to be recognized as well? So we steered away from that in making this recommendation, but certainly it set councils' discretion to alter this list if they feel it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that answer. So I will take tonight the liberty of moving that amendment for St. Patrick's Day, only because downtown, as we know, whether you're a student or a member of, you know, just, you know, like any age, they do celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Like, look at the stores, you know, lots of green and, you know, some green laser lights could be shone at City Hall, and the downtown definitely celebrates St. Patrick's Day on that one day. So I just want to move that amendment to put it on the table, just to see if we can add it as the last point, number 16, 17 on our list.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to amend. Report number 100, clause three, moved by councillor Osannick, seconded by councillor Neil, that would add in lighting for St. Patrick's Day. So any discussion on the motion to amend? Councillor Neil?
I'm a little disappointed that I just heard that St. Patrick, with the name Neil, that St. Patrick's Day isn't an important community day. I think the community does celebrate it, and I don't think it's specific to everybody. The big joke is, everybody's Irish on St. Patrick's Day. I mean, everybody, regardless of whether your name is Neil or Osannick. We all celebrate St. Patty's Day, and there isn't another, I don't believe, reason for an illumination in March. So this would be a good opportunity, I think, to show that and to give our citizens an opportunity to enjoy City Hall probably in green. So I appreciate that. I hope this passes.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, we will call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. Any other discussion on the clause as amended? We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause four, amendments to flag display and flying policy. Councillor Hutchison?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to ask the staff, I was just discussing with them before the meeting, that 3.1.4, there needs to be a change in the verb. It says, "A request to display a flag on city properties shall be automatically disqualified when the subject matter denigrates..." dot, 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 "other beliefs that promote hate." But it really should say is, "subject matter promotes." When the subject matter promotes beliefs of hate, you're not going to get in there. So I talked to the clerk, he agreed, it was an oversight, but before we pass it, we should correct it. I'm wondering if we can just do that by friendly amendment?
Mr. Clerk, through your worship, we'll accept that as a friendly change. Thank you.
I'm fine with that then. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on clause four. And that carries. Clause six, public engagement framework. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. And as was brought up in the delegation, this is almost a housekeeping amendment. The idea is that in the report, there are several policies that are incorporated into it. So if you look on page 133 of your package, page six of the report, it talks about inform, consult, involve, collaborate, and empower as public engagement. However, in the definitions earlier, it only lists two of those, inform and involve. And it seems that if we have a definition that doesn't actually include what it says in the report, you're missing, as the presenter had said, the heart and soul of the report. It sets a bias in the direction of two as opposed to all five of them, and we sort of want an equality or equity between the four or five pillars. So instead of pointing out two of them and only in the definition, the proposed motion is meant to include all of them. And the motion is on there.
Okay, so a motion to amend, moved by councillor McLaren. Is there a secondor?
Yes, Neil, but that's not it. That's not it. Is it? It's not what I gave you guys.
So it's a motion to...
Yes, it is.
...to effectively change the wording for the definition of public engagement from the process by which residents are informed on or given the opportunity to be involved in city decisions that impact all or part of the community, to the process by which residents are informed about, consulted with, involved, collaborated with, empowered, and provided with meaningful feedback concerning city decisions that impact all or part of the community. Sorry, is there a secondor for that? Seconded by councillor Neil, thank you. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. There's another definition that is on page 130. It's under the heading, "What is public engagement?" And it is preferable to this amendment, I would argue. The, I would also like to say that this is the result of about two years of work at the Administrative Policies Committee and exceptional work by staff, which I will get into when we speak to the main motion. But it doesn't seem like good form to be dealing with the definition of public engagement at this stage, having worked on this for two years. I prefer the definition that is on page 130, and therefore I would not support this amendment.
Thank you. Anybody else to the motion to amend? Councillor Stroud?
It's a question to staff. The practical ramifications of the recommendation as it stands in the package compared to the amendment by councillor McLaren, and also compared to the longer definition that councillor Holland just mentioned at the bottom of page 130, what's the difference in, for city staff in implementing the public engagement strategy with the three different possible definitions?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, through Mr. Mayor. So the amendment would not change the way that staff would implement the public engagement framework. The framework is quite clear in terms of the expectation that the engagement can go from inform all the way to empower. So the amendment does not change that one way or another. I do appreciate that it may help to make certain things clearer, but from a staff perspective, we would still proceed to implement the engagement framework as it's laid out and recommended to council.
Right, so I get from your answer that basically this amendment does clarify for the public in a very obvious way by putting it front and center in the recommendation, a broader, longer definition of public engagement. However, it doesn't go as far as the piece that mentioned by councillor Holland. Is that also, I mean, it's in the report, so is that also unchanged by the result of this amendment?
Mr. Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So no, it wouldn't be impacted by the change in the amendment. Again, the implementation of the framework would follow the same process, and the worksheets would also be applied in the same way, even if the definition was slightly amended.
Okay, well, I'll just say simply that we had a delegation to this, on this matter, specifically because of the definition, the amendment is compatible with that viewpoint. That delegation was made by a member of the public who has been engaged for quite a long time in the City of Kingston, and so it's kind of like putting the definition into action if we listen to her and pass this amendment, so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. I tend to agree with councillor Holland on this one. We are now in wordsmithing mode. We've already heard from staff that it's not going to change anything. So if we go and we change one definition here, then suddenly we open up a Pandora's box about, well, then we need to make sure there's another definition here on page 10, and there's another one on page 15, and we have to make sure everything is consistent. I just don't think that this is the road that we should go down. So while I appreciate the intent, I don't think it's necessary, right? We all know that these are the principles that are involved in. We have a special council meeting, by the way, on November the 15th, that's going to be talking about this new approach we're going to take. This isn't going to change that one way or the other.
This isn't going to change that one way or the other. So I tend to agree with Counselor Holland. My concern is that if there's been hundreds, if not thousands, of Kingstonians that have inputted into the report at this point, to simply change it now, I think would be inappropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Anybody else wishes to speak to the motion to amend? Counselor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So just to clarify, this isn't the central part of the report that I'm referring to. This is the section on related definitions, which is as close as you can get to the legal aspect. So the longer one that Counselor Holland was talking about is included in this. But when the public look at this several years from now, who may not have been part of the consultation process, and they look at the definition as it is within like the glossary part of this, and it's missing three out of the five pillars, that's going to set a certain amount of ambiguity that we can alleviate right now by simply adding the three missing ones that everybody has worked on for the past several years. There are three that are located throughout this document that are not in the actual definition as they are related in Exhibit B, page one, which is where everything starts. If you don't have these things correct, everything else kind of falls apart. So yes, staff may know about it today. What about later, when there is new staff? They look at this and say, well, why are we only talking about two of them in the actual definitions? It's to clarify it for posterity and for future use. If we want to keep consistency, consistency is something worth keeping, isn't it? Isn't consistency worthwhile? And we want to do this consistently over time, not just now. We may all understand, but the future may not. And that's why it's important to do this one little wordsmith at this moment, because people wanted all five pillars, and they're not there in the definition on page one of the public engagement framework. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. And that loses by a vote of five to six. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the clause as not amended? Counselor Holland.
Thank you, worship. So as I indicated, there has been a great deal of work. I had the pleasure in the early years of this term of council, working on this in the Administrative Policies Committee with members of the committee, and I'm no longer there, but I was struck at the time when this came forward as a priority of council, how important it was to staff and how much effort staff had previously been putting into engaging with the public, and how they were committed to getting more and better input from the public always. So having this framework is really important because it gives all of us invested in moving forward together as a city, some ideas on how we're going to work together to do this well. And again, as I mentioned several times, it works both ways. It's not just a matter of informing the public, it's a matter of having the public be a committed part of the process, and this is a really important first step forward. One thing that I just wanted to mention, and it's sort of a question, but it's probably too detailed at this point, but looking at the guidelines for participation, I think they're very concise, I think they're wonderful, I think they will lead to better discussions, better events with members of the public. And I was just curious, in the research for this, if there was ever, if other municipalities did this, or whether there was any intention to perhaps read these guidelines aloud at the beginning of a meeting. It says that they would be made visible to the public, but I think it's important for people to hear about them as well each time they arrive.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I would say there are portions of the guidelines that are used in other communities. So if you look at the first section, the participants agree to be respectful, be open to all ideas, and those are usually identified at the beginning of a session, so a public Or I should say, there's a section of the guidelines that is quite unique, that was put together based on comments that we heard locally, that other municipalities did not necessarily have in their public engagement framework. So in terms of, you know, choosing to end a public session if basically a situation becomes out of control, or there are members of the public or participants that maybe are feel threatened, those kinds of things, we've tried to build some of that in the framework because it is actually a reality in terms of some of the comments that we heard.
Thank you, that's great. And I do appreciate the commitment to, these principles are important for lots of reasons, but most importantly, I think, because anyone who hasn't yet participated in such an activity, we want them to come forward and have the best possible experience and know that the purpose of this framework is to set up a really positive exchange of ideas and to have it facilitated and the guidelines put forward in such a professional way, I think is going to be very welcoming and hopefully will improve the diversity that we have at these events. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause six. And that carries. Report number 101 from the Nominations Advisory Committee.
Thank you, and through you. It is my privilege to provide counsel to report number 101 from the Nominations Advisory Committee duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that report number 101 from the Nominations Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, public appointments to committees, that Kyle Hollerin be appointed to the Arts Advisory Committee for a term ending November 30th, 2018, that Mark Lattes be appointed to the Committee of Adjustment for a term ending November 30th, 2018, that Laura Patterson be appointed to the Rural Advisory Committee for a term ending November 30th, 2018. We will call the vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Shell, report number 102 from the Chief Administrative Officer, be considered.
Okay, so this is a consider report. So there are two particular options available to counsel, but first, we need a motion of reconsideration to put it back on the floor. So if anyone's, and I understand that we just received this report because it was part of the addits, but there was a procedural issue that came up with respect to the way that we would be approving the winners of the arts awards. So we'd like to change, so staff are asking that we reconsider that. So what I would do at this point is I would ask for a motion of reconsideration on the floor. Moved by Counselor Neil, is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Shell. So this requires two-thirds to pass. And that carries. So the recommendation from staff is now on the floor. Now there are two options that are presented to us. So one is a delegation to staff, and the other would be an approval by council in open session. So I will look to council to move one of those two options. Counselor Shell.
It's an awfully quick read. I think I'm going to move option two.
Okay, so option two. The terms of reference for the mayor's arts award would be amended accordingly, and staff would confirm the list of award winners based on the final report, recommendations submitted by the working group. Staff would then prepare and submit a council report that asks council to approve the list of award winners based on the information provided. Is there a seconder? So, okay, Counselor Shell, do you want to speak to it?
Still trying to read it. The one that I've suggested, council maintains its authority to approve the award winners. Those names are made public as part of the agenda at a regularly scheduled council meeting. So that makes it similar to the sports awards. That's when they're first announced, but in this case, council has to approve it, which we don't with the sports awards. But the first, council delegates its authority to the working group it has appointed. The names of the award winners are kept confidential until they are announced as part of a public event. So we're delegating the whole thing to that committee. Okay, then I'm going to vote against option two. Now that I caught on. I like the idea that it's in secret.
Okay.
If I could get staff to just clarify that that's my understanding is now correct?
Through you, worship, that is correct. The two proposals that are in front of you achieve two different outcomes. So the idea is asking council to delegate their authority to the nominations working group, not only to do the work of identifying the winners, but also having the authority to decide who that is, and then they'll work through staff to have then a public announcement at an event. The second option is a situation in which council prefers to maintain that authority, and then the winners actually come forward and a staff report in open session. So once the agenda gets published, then the names of the award winners are also published at that same time.
So Counselor Shell, since you, Mr. Clerk, can we? Okay, so Counselor Shell, since you still have the floor, I'll allow you to withdraw your motion to approve option two and to re-present option one.
Thank you. I would like to withdraw my recommendation of option two and prefer option one.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Holland. Thank you. Counselor Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. I just want to say I emphatically support option number one. The worst possible way to announce something like this is for it to basically just show up on a council agenda on a Thursday. That's just not the way to do this. So this way, we can do a proper event, people can come, the people are nominated, and then that could be a proper celebration. So thank you to Counselor Shell for moving option one. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud.
I just want to ask a question for the benefit of those following along at home or in the gallery. Who makes up the nominations working group? It might be in here, but I haven't come across it in my scanning.
Through you, worship. The nominations committee is made up of a group that's drawn primarily from the Arts Advisory Committee, so they designate up to three members, one of whom is a member of council. So in this most recent, or this inaugural iteration, it was Counselor Neil who participated in that process. And then the council of the city of Kingston has the opportunity, on the recommendation of the Arts Advisory Committee, to appoint community members, and they are drawn to represent as broad a cross-section of the arts community as possible, as well as diversity within the community. So those were brought forward in a motion that council approved to appoint those people to the nominations working group, and then they went away to do the work that they were tasked with doing, which was to reach out to the community, do their research, identify a long list and then a short list of potential award winners before coming up with the final list.
Thank you. And what's the size of the nominations working group?
Through you, worship, I believe it is seven.
Okay, no more questions. Counselor Neil has more information.
Counselor Neil?
I don't know if I have more information, but I was a member of the working group. We met, I think, four or five times. We had very good discussion. The difficulty in Kingston is there are so many deserving artists that could have been chosen within the various categories. I will say that I think the process worked very well, and I'm looking forward to the mayor giving out the awards. So, oh, and I will add that like other grant groups, the council member didn't vote, although I've never been accused of keeping my opinions to myself. But I wasn't one of the voting members of the committee.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on option one. And that carries. We have nothing from committee of the whole. Thank you. So the clerk has just reminded me that option one is in itself an amendment to the original recommendation. So now we will call the vote on the recommendation as amended. And that carries. Okay, we have nothing from committee of the whole. Information report, 2017 Priority Status Matrix Q3 Update. Counselor Stroud.
I have a question about what's in the matrix. And I apologize if this question has come up in the past and been answered, but I can't recall it being like this. So just looking at the various, it's organized by strategic priorities, and there's a number of items under each strategic priority. It flows directly out of the strategic priorities document. And then under green, the city, it has a few points, some of which have been completed. The last one under that, so it's in the middle of page 147 of your package, it talks about the Comprehensive Tree Inventory and Quality Report, which is scheduled to come back this quarter, Q4 2017. Does that include, I guess with the inventory, it seems logical that it would include information on where we are with the doubling the tree canopy by 2025 initiative, which is in the strategic priorities but doesn't figure in this list.
Mr. Van Beuren.
Through you, worship. I will confirm with the Director of Public Works that that is indeed the case, and if we have the opportunity to report on that, we'll make sure that that's included in that report forthcoming.
Thank you, because it is in the high-level document that the public has seen, and several members of the public have asked me what's the status on that. So that's why I ask. If it's coming in the report, then that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. No information reports, members of council. Miscellaneous business, we do have a couple of motions. Number one, that Counselor Shell be appointed to serve on the Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation. Can I have a mover? Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Holland. seconded by Counsel Holland. Please vote. And that carries. Number two, that as requested by Family and Children Services of Froton, Athletics in Addington, council proclaimed October 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Kingston. Moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Shell. Please vote. And that carries. Before we move to new motions, I'll just note it is approaching 10:45. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting, please? Moved by Counsel Hutchison, seconded by Counsel Osterhoff. Motion to extend the meeting to finish the agenda. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, new motions. Number one, moved by Counsel McLaren, seconded by Counsel Osterhoff. Whereas commemorations are formally established in the Kingston Commemoration Strategy 2015 to 2024, represent intentional acts to acknowledge, remember, and educate about past people, places, events, and ideas. Whereas our understanding of past peoples, places, events, and ideas is shaped by our multicultural society and is open to reevaluation through an increasingly diverse lens. And whereas the Kingston Commemoration Strategy 2015 to 2024 identifies as a guiding principle that commemorations shall be realized in a range of forms, and together they should provide opportunities for celebration, reflection, dialogue, and critique. Whereas the Kingston, City of Kingston Commemoration Policy provides guidelines for managing commemoration requests that are on city-owned property or that require city resources or approval. Whereas the City of Kingston Commemoration Policy intends to provide a transparent, welcoming, and efficient process to enable all sectors of the community and city staff to understand decision-making and action for all commemorative forms. Whereas requests to add, alter, and/or renovate existing physical commemorations are currently covered under category C, commemorative forms within the Kingston Commemoration Strategy and the City of Kingston Commemoration Policy. And whereas the Kingston Commemoration Strategy identifies as an outcome, the new commemorations shall address current gaps and themes and subjects listed in the priority thematic areas to help to foster public awareness of diverse stories. Therefore, be it resolved that city staff, as part of the scheduled review of the commemoration policy in February 2018, report back with amendments that clarify the process by which individuals and community groups can request additions, alterations, and amendments to existing commemorations and the process by which such requests would be reviewed and implemented. Counsel McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. This, the events of this, that brought to this motion started several months ago, where I received a request to change the name of Indian Road in my district. As it turns out, that there are some people who feel that the term Indian is a derogatory term. In the process of doing a lot of my due diligence on this, I discovered that the indigenous community itself is divided on this, and that the residents on the street are also divided. They're divided in favor of not changing it more often than not. And then recently, you may have heard that there was a motion passed by the Teachers' Federation asking to remove Sir John A. from public schools. Following that, I got a few emails requesting the removal of a statue in Kingston, a train, and changing the name of Sir John A. Boulevard. These things are not exactly the best recommendations, in my opinion. So we needed to find, in a sense, a middle ground. So when talking to staff, it became clear that the strategy and the policy could allow for this, but were in some times, or in some cases, a little conflicted. There was language that wasn't consistent between the two of them. And so this is an attempt to bring in clarity and advertise the fact that the city is willing to consider minority and marginalized viewpoints when expressing commemorations of things that we think are important to commemorate. And the bigger picture here is that we do live in a multicultural society, a multicultural society that has many different groups that have come here at many different times and have experienced historical events differently. And if we are going to live successfully together with many different groups cohabitating this land, it's important that we listen to each other, because multiculturalism is not only just identifying and celebrating a particular group, but also listening to them, especially when there may be wrongs attached to them. And erasing history by getting rid of statues or getting rid of names is not conducive to remembering mistakes that we may have made so that we can avoid them in the future. The point of this motion is to make it clear and to everybody, and to advertise the fact that we are willing to hear other minority viewpoints, so that we can learn from history, so that we can learn to better understand each other. It's part of the reconciliation, truth and reconciliation. But it's also wider than that, because we want to make the adjustments that are necessary to cohabit this land successfully. It's in a sense like a marriage. We need not only identify the other person, but we need to have real communication between the two of us, between the two. And then often, you have to make real adjustments. And this is a step in that direction, to actually listen to the narratives and the stories, or the things that other cultures that are living here with us think are important to be said. And so I hope that you will consider supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counsel Stroud?
Without drawing this out too long, because the hour's getting late, the, as I understand it, the, there's only one be it resolved clause, and it's asking for a report from staff, right, to, that potentially would open up a little bit of a Pandora's Box. And by parallel example, we all know what's going down south of the border. And the statues that have been removed in various places, Baltimore, for example, removed all of their statues of Confederate figures overnight, in the, in the middle of the night, to avoid controversy. This kind of thing would scare certain residents of Kingston if, if we were contemplating that, that type of thing. Removing statues, controversial figures, because they happen to be controversial now. And I, and I believe Counsel McLaren just said that what he's looking for is some kind of a strategy that would allow for a little asterisk to get placed in certain places of commemoration, to, to point out that there is another side to the story of that person, or that thing that is being commemorated. It's a valid, it's a valid pursuit, but we should be aware that it could also be very controversial. Like it or not, Sir John A., for example, was a Kingstonian. And, you know, many people are proud of that fact. He is not equivalent to General Lee or General Stonewall Jackson in the Confederate Army. He's not in any way equivalent to them, because they were losing generals in a civil war. Our closest equivalent would be the General Montcalm, who lost the Battle of Quebec. There probably is a statue for him somewhere in the province of Quebec, and maybe that would be, you know, a controversial figure that should be revisited. But the idea that you can unwrit history is a little bit of a dead end. So I just want to caution colleagues, and I don't think this clause does that. But be careful what you wish for if we, if we, if we look like we're trying to be revisionists, history revisionists. My father, Confederation, who, for all his faults, one of the most fascinating figures in our history, and it can't, it can't be unwritten. Like it or not, this is, this country is, it's called Canada, and it's as a result of the alliance that he made with the French in 1867. Whether he was guilty of other crimes or not, that can't be undone. So I think we got to be, be very careful we don't alienate that large group of residents that might actually want to continue celebrating certain figures. That's just one example. I look forward, I'm going to support the, the motion. I look forward to the report from staff. I'm sure staff knows exactly what I'm talking about, because this thing can be very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Hutchison?
We all know that the controversial, or potentially controversial aspect to this, but I would just draw council's attention to the nature of the resolve clause. It asks for a review and a report back. That means everything is suspended till it gets back to us. Staff will look at it, probably do a really good job parsing all the concepts and what's involved, and then we'll see. So I don't see anything wrong with the motion. It's just a question of whether we want to be better informed or not. So we'll go from there, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Neil?
Just quickly, I support the motion. I, I see it as an opportunity for, with the assistance of staff, to put things into context. So should we do something about a statue of Sir John A.? I would not, as a former high school teacher, want to make, make that kind of judgment. Do we want to put the statue and Sir John A. in an appropriate context that shows him to be the complex person that he truly was, and to show that not everybody wishes to celebrate Sir John A.? I think that would be, as a former educator, I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. So, and I see this motion as moving us in that direction. So, so I can support it.
Thank you. Counsel Shell?
Thank you, Madam Patterson. I, I get a slightly different take on this when I read it, because we've talked about that this is a very difficult subject. It's not usually something that we would work on as council or staff, because we're not professionals in history. And this seems to be a lot of what this discussion is about, that there are different takes on history. So I wouldn't be at all surprised that staff come back with a process that involves hiring professionals to just, if, if somebody in the community has a different take on something, that, that the process would be that we start to gather up information from qualified professionals to help guide us in this. Or we could be pushing off in all kinds of directions. So I can support it, but also knowing that this resolve clause is open enough to, it certainly doesn't direct staff in how to clarify the process. It gives staff the ability to reach some kind of process that I think could be even more unusual than we contemplate at the moment, since this isn't a topic that usually city councils get involved in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. When the issue about Sir John A. hit the fan, there were a number of national outlets that reached out to my office and to Kingston, saying, what's Kingston's perspective on this? And one of the things that I told them was what we had already made a decision to do as a city in the context of Canada's 150th celebrations. And that was to, to tell a broad set of stories, to be inclusive, and to be able to tell the good and the bad, to be honest, to promote conversation and dialogue, to be able to show leadership to the rest of the country about how to have these sorts of conversations about important historical figures, and obviously somebody that we're very, very tied to here in Kingston. When I read this motion, and Counsel McLaren and I did speak, speak about it, and I'm happy to support it, because the way that I read it is that we are asking staff to, to investigate this, but with a slant to adding to history, not taking away from it. So when I read about additions or amendments, we're talking about adding to perspectives, not removing things. And I honestly think that that is the right way to go. So I'm interested to see what staff will come back to us with. But I think that that is how we find that balance. That's how we have these conversations, is by adding, not taking away. So with that, I'm happy to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? With that, we will call the vote on new motion number one. Please vote. And that carries. New motion number two, moved by Counsel McLaren, seconded by Counsel Neil. Whereas opioids include hydromorphone, oxidone, fentanyl, carfentanil, morphine, and heroin are a class of drug used primarily for pain relief. And whereas Canada is among the top prescribers of opioids in the world, and Ontario has the highest opioid dispensing rates in the country, with nearly 2 million Ontarians dispensed an opioid in 2014, 15, which totaled approximately 9 million dispenses, putting roughly 15% of Ontarians on prescription opioids. And where opioids act as depressants on the respiratory system, which can slow or stop breathing, and lead to overdose and death if misused. And whereas opioids are also accessed illicitly, either through diverted prescriptions or through the illegal drug market, resulting in community crises in many parts of Canada and Ontario. And whereas there has been an increase in opioid-related emergency department visits and admissions to hospital in Kingston, and confirmed cases of both bootleg, fentanyl, and carfentanil in the KFLNA region. And whereas the presence of opioids such as fentanyl and the even stronger carfentanil in the KFLNA and other illegal drug markets is concerning, because fentanyl can be 50 to 100 times more toxic than morphine, and even tiny amounts, the equivalent to one or two grains of salt, can cause overdose and death. Whereas fentanyl and carfentanil are being illegally mixed into a range of other drugs, such as heroin, cocaine, counterfeit pills, such as picocet, and oxycontin, and cannabis, increasing the risks that individuals can unintentionally consume these powerful opioids, increasing their risks of overdose and death. And whereas KFLNA community partners are developing a comprehensive community response to tackle the opioid crisis that focuses on prevention, treatment, harm reduction, enforcement, and surveillance. Whereas a comprehensive approach to reduce the morbidity and mortality of opioid intoxication and overdose includes increasing the availability of naloxone in the community. And whereas naloxone is a medication that can temporarily reverse an overdose caused by opioid drugs, and can save a life by keeping an individual alive while they wait for emergency support to arrive. And whereas increasing naloxone availability is a key harm reduction initiative in a local community response, therefore be it resolved that the City of Kingston endorse the distribution of naloxone kits to all public institutions, and an education and training program on how to use them as part of a community drug policy. And that all city-funded organizations be formally asked to participate and have available the naloxone kits and the training to use them. And that the City of Kingston encourage the provincial government, through the responsible ministers, to work together to make naloxone kits easily available in all public institutions. And that this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities in Ontario with a population greater than 40,000, with the request that they consider indicating their support for this most important initiative. And that this result be forwarded to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, with the request that they include proposing a community drug policy that includes access to naloxone in their respective engagements with the provincial government. And that this resolution be shared with the Premier of Ontario, all opposition leaders, the Ministers of Health and Long-Term Care, opposition health critics, our local MPPs, the four school boards, and all city-funded organizations. Counsel McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. About two and a half years ago, when this crisis was sort of in its infancy, city council passed a motion, asking, your worship, with your help, the provincial government to institute a patch-for-patch fentanyl reduction plan to help reduce the amount of fentanyl in the area. They, the provincial government passed that, and so far it's been a success. But it's not enough. It was just a drop in the bucket. What we're doing here is asking for a lot more. There is a community drug strategy that's being developed right now in, in cooperation with the police and the other frontline, frontline institutions, as well as public health. And one of the things that they're talking about a lot is harm reduction. And one of the things that we can do immediately is have these naloxone kits available. And the reason that this is important right now is because it's still growing. The epidemic is still growing, compared to two years ago, and compared to even last week. We've heard that 140 cases were saved in Kingston as a result of having naloxone kits with the most vulnerable people. But the point is that the vulnerability of people is increasing, in the sense that more and more of these drugs are being put throughout the entire community. People who are in need of pain relief leave their drugs near children. These kind of things happen at all the times. There are more and more people being put at risk, because the prevalence of these drugs is increasing. And it's not just between drug addicts, and it's between the normal population of the, of the, people we don't assume or would think are drug addicts. And that's the whole point of this. People that you don't think are susceptible or vulnerable are, because the environment is changing. And if the environment is changing, we need to be proactive about this. And from what And from what we've heard, Kingston is a center of this, of bootlegged and prescription and legal prescriptions. And in that sense, since our children are at risk, we are at risk, our grandparents are at risk, and people have been saved by this, and it's being paid for by the provincial government, it would make sense that we ask them to do it. They've listened to us in the past on a few things, and I'm hoping that they will listen to us again. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor George.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I fully support the motion. And I don't know if all of you have been reading all of the AMO reports that you receive on a regular basis, but AMO, we have been dealing with this for some time. And just as of this past Friday, we did pass a resolution at AMO, which is very similar to what you have, not as lengthy. But it, the part that concerns me, and we tried to address that in the recommendation for AMO, is the liability that's associated with the administration of the drug by non-EMS first responders and others. And of course, first responders being fire and police. And in this motion, you're also looking at the possibility of, I guess, as councillor Shell put it earlier, it could be her if she happened to be in a, in a public location where, you know, there was the, you know, some, something available for, for her to possibly use or others. We all know the dangers, the risks that exist out there. The numbers that we have to date, well, just one, that there was over 700 deaths just in Ontario alone that were opioid-related, and that was just in 2015. And we know that it's increased by about 94%. It's getting worse and worse and worse. So, it's something that's been on the radar, radar from the Board of Directors for AMO now for a while. We have sent a motion forward to, to the province. It simply states that we're asking the government to ensure that all first responders, including paramedics, police, and firefighters, have access to provincially funded naloxone. Did I say that correctly? That can reverse an opioid overdose, along with training into use and standards. And that the province and Act legislation regulations as needed to limit the liability of non-paramedic first responders, again being your fire and police, when administering the drug to treat an overdose. Because that's one of the biggest concerns that they have. And, but we also recognize, as just the province, that each municipality will be given the opportunity as well to bring in their, their own policies and how they wish to treat it as such. So, the fact that we have other recommendations in here doesn't take away from this, and I can certainly support them. It's not that the province is going to support it, but the municipality can, because they're allowing us that, that ability to do that. So, the only thing that I would suggest, and I have provided amendment to the clerk, and I'm hoping that everyone will support it, because it kind of coincides with the concern we have at AMO, and that is that, that is that following your, your third resolve clause, that it be amended to after the wording institutions, that we add the words, "And the province and Act legislation regulations as needed to limit the liability of non-paramedic responders." And I didn't put first responders in there, because the first responders, that's reflective of police and fire. So, a non-paramedic responder could be a councillor Shell, as she mentioned earlier, when administering the drug to treat an overdose. Because I don't know if there's any such thing as a Good Samaritan Act anymore, whether that would apply, but I think it, it's just, again, we know that other, other recommendations have come from other municipalities, basically supporting the same concept. And it's to really protect those, because you never know, in today's world, you attempt to save the life of an individual, and the lawyers are pretty quick to jump on a family member to say, "Well, if they'd done it this way, so you should chase them down." I went through that a number of years ago, in 87. A friend of mine and myself, we pulled a fellow out of a burning truck, and the next thing I know, when we went to visit the guy in the hospital, he was told he'd already been visited by a lawyer, who in fact, thought that he wouldn't have been injured to the point he was, had we taken more care in getting him out of the vehicle. So, there, you know, that's 30 years ago now. So, it's, it's a concern that we have, you know, with these lawyers who, who want to take advantage of a bad situation.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, through you, your worship. I can advise that the Province of Ontario does have a Good Samaritan Act. It's a very brief piece of legislation, and it's important to note that there is protection from liability. And because the act is so short, I'm just going to reference a couple of provisions. So, a person who voluntarily and without reasonable expectation of compensation or reward provides the services in an emergency is not liable for damages, and they're not as a result of the person's negligent in acting or failing to act while providing the services, unless it's somehow established it was gross negligence. And this also applies to a healthcare professional who provides emergency healthcare services or first aid assistance to a person who is ill, injured, or unconscious as a result of an accident or other emergency, if it's outside of a healthcare setting. And an individual other than a healthcare professional who provides emergency first aid assistance to a person who is ill, injured, or unconscious as a result of an accident or other emergency. So, I, I do believe that these provisions would be the protection from liability clauses that the Good Samaritan Act would be intended to cover. Now, the, the federal government, as you may know, has also put in place legislation that speaks to, it's not an offense if you are in possession of controlled substance while trying to save the life of someone else. So, that's, they've also kind of responded to another aspect. So, in other words, another drug user, hypothetically, could save the life of another, and that wouldn't be seen as a criminal offense, even though both of them may have drugs on their person. So, those are some of the provisions that have been enacted with respect to the liability aspect.
Thank you. So...
But I would still like to have this amendment if, if, and I do have a seconder in councillor Holland.
Okay, so it's moved, but, so the motion to amend, moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Holland. Does anybody else wishes to speak to the amendment? Councillor McLaren?
It's friendly.
Well, I realize that, but we'll still have to, given that the size of the amendment, we're still going to have to, to take the vote. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Shell?
This might not be quite the spot. It's this, the word "all public institutions" totally confuses me, but maybe I should leave that for when we can start discussing.
Yeah, I think that, that could go back to the main motion.
Certainly liability, yes.
Okay. Anybody else that wishes to speak, just to the amendment only? Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. Please vote. And that carries. Councillor George, you still have the floor, or is there anything? You're good? Okay, so moving on, next on my list is councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I also have an amendment. It's, it's self-explanatory. It follows from the questions I had for Dr. Moore earlier in the delegation. So, and it's also related to what councillor George was speaking about, but it's a different aspect. So, I am a healthcare professional, and I have administered Narcan before. That's the brand name, by the way, Narcan. Easier to say than naloxone, or however you want to say that. But it's a brand name, so maybe I shouldn't use it. Anyway, naloxone, naloxone is an antidote that acts instantaneously. So, if you give enough of it, that binds to all the opioid receptors in your body, you actually remove all effects of the narcotic instantly, as soon as, as soon as the blood gets there. What that means in practical reality, for a nurse like me that's seen it happen, is that it's a dramatic change of status of the individual. So, yes, you'll save his or her life if they were in respiratory arrest. That's what happens with the, with the overdose. The reason you die is you can't breathe, because your respiratory drive is actually suppressed by the, by the narcotic. If you reverse that, breathing returns, but so does the individual's consciousness, to a very high level, sometimes hyperalert, agitated, possibly even violent. So, for that reason, if you're a healthcare professional like me, you know that possibility. In the emergency room, what they do is they, they give it slowly. They titrate it in the IV at a very slow rate, so that it binds slowly to the receptor, so that the patient slowly comes around, so you can stop it in time. You can also, if they become agitated, you can take measures. You don't have those safeguards in the community, and you don't have the training of the, of the responders. The responders aren't first responders or healthcare professionals. They are just members of the community that are going to have these kits. It's important to make the kits available. I absolutely support the motion, but the amendment addresses the, the danger to the, to the community person. They may not know about this instantaneous effect, and so I've added a wording to that effect after, in, in the clause that talks about the training. So, the training to use them, it spells out what I've just said there. Clear precautions, stating reciprocence, you know, as you can see there. And then another part, which is not related, but it has to do with the root cause of the problem in the first place. I could have put two separate amendments, but as you can see, it's just adding it to the, before the final clause. We're talking to the government now. They regulate physicians, they regulate prescription narcotics. We have an over-prescription problem that was mentioned by Dr. Moore, and also by councillor McLaren. So, too many drugs are being prescribed. The government needs to do something about it, to cut off the source at the front end, because the naloxone is actually the very last point you can actually intervene. It's the very last, sort of a Band-Aid solution, as was said. So, that's what, that's for, hopefully it's also self-explanatory, and I hope for your support.
Okay, so, we have a motion to amend, moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Holland, a discussion on the amendment. Okay, so we will call the vote on the motion to amend. Please vote. That carries. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion as amended? Councillor Shell?
Thank you. Yes, I do have a question for the mover. What are "all public institutions"? I find that very loose.
Councillor McLaren?
Places where people frequent.
That's a problem. And I don't know how to fix it, because it's, it relates to just what we've been talking about. We're in, we're into something that as a council, we, I recognize this motion, that it's very important, and I can support it, but it's, it's, that particularly is very loose, and is, is totally confusing to someone like me, who is a volunteer in places, and I really don't want to be dealing with Narcan, because it's a drug on top of a drug. And we're talking about a subject that is huge, but it's related to the medical profession, not regular citizens, in terms of help. So, certainly to make, get the government involved. The Narcan kits, I think the medical officer of health is absolutely in favor, but just as councillor Stroud said, there are whole implications to this that we haven't even begun to understand, including who on earth is bringing all this death drug to its market? I mean, it's, it's beyond us. We're trying to, to, as a council, say we're very concerned, we want things to keep happening against the dreadful things that are happening to our fellow citizens, but, boy, this is way beyond me. So, I'm, I'm leery of this motion, particularly this "to all public institutions." However, we're, I'll looking, I'll look at it as us more making a statement than trying to direct the government as to where these kits should be and that sort of thing. But, as I say, this is, this is huge, and it's not something a council, we can advise, obviously, and recommend, but not get in the weeds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cork, can I see you for a moment? Councillor Holland, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So, I actually very much appreciate the intent and the direction of where this motion is going. I think it's an important statement to make. I'm also completely in agreement with councillor Shell about how this council, we lack the expertise in exactly what it is that we want to be directing or asking for. So, what I would propose is a motion to defer to a future council meeting to allow for a discussion at the Public Health Board. And I believe that there are several councillors around this table that sit on that board. And so the request would be that this, that there could be a discussion of the Public Health Board on wording and recommendations that could then be reported back to, to council. So, that's a motion to defer.
Okay.
To allow that to happen, if there's...
We have a motion to defer on the floor. Do we have a seconder by councillor Shell? And so it is...
Point of clarification, your, your madam deputy mayor. Is it, is it the intention to defer the amended, the motion as already amended? Is that how, how it works? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer this new motion number two, as amended, moved and seconded. Anyone like to speak to time or place? Councillor McLaren?
So, speaking to time and place, the Board of Health has discussed this, and it's in communion with them that we brought this forward.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
I think it's time and place and direction that we can address, isn't it? And the direction you've given, I'm sorry, I'll look to the chair.
Time and place.
The direction you've given, that's been given by the motion, suggests that the, the three members of KFLNA go back and ask questions of, and I just want to point out that there has been, that this motion indeed came from a motion that KFLNA passed. And I don't, I don't know what we'd be asking for, because it's already, the information was already shared with KFLNA, so. So, I can't support a deferral for that reason. You're asking us to do something we've already done.
So, can we look to defer this motion to the next meeting of council?
So, I, I would, I would only offer that, I think there was a really, really good question that councillor Shell raised, that we do not have an answer for.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, so to allow for just a further feedback, whatever, that, whether that's the next motion to council or to November the 7th. I'm not sure when the next Board of Health meeting is, but just for that touch point.
It's in a couple more weeks, I believe. Yeah, it's the last, so it's on the 25th of October.
So, it'd be a motion to defer to November the 7th.
So, the motion to defer is to the next, the council meeting on November 7th. And seconder, councillor Shell? Anything else to time or place? Seeing none, we will call the question and the motion to defer. Oh, sorry, are we voting? I just, I just noted in my book that that meeting of the Board of Health is actually an orientation session, I believe. It's a full agenda... It's a full agenda, so I don't know, but I do know that we would have an opportunity between now and then to discuss with members of that board. Okay, thanks. Call the question. And it passes by vote of seven to three. I return the chair.
Thank you. Onto new motion number three. Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Stroud. Whereas the weather this spring and summer was inclement, but summer-like weather conditions continue into the fall. And whereas the Administrative Policies Committee will not be discussing long-term options for revisions to bylaw number eighty-seven dash one thirty-six, a bylaw to authorize the adoption of regulations established for the purpose of dealing with applications for the extended use of sidewalks pertaining to the period of operation for sidewalk patios until November ninth, 2017. Whereas there is no mechanism in the bylaw to administer exemptions to the period of operation for sidewalk patios in order to extend the operating season beyond the current closing date of October thirty-first, therefore be it resolved that a bylaw be presented to council for all three readings to amend section fourteen of bylaw number eighty-seven dash one thirty-six, being a bylaw to authorize the adoption of regulations established for the purpose of dealing with applications for the extended use of sidewalks, in order to extend the period of operation for sidewalk patios from October thirty-first to November thirtieth for the 2017 period of operations only, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that any patio operator wishing to extend their season to November thirtieth, 2017, notify the director of engineering and writing before October twentieth, 2017. Number two, that the patio operator provide proof of the required insurance coverage that includes up to November thirtieth, 2017. Number three, that any serving patio operators provide proof of liquor license coverage to include up to November thirtieth, 2017. Number four, that those patio operators who do not have existing approvals for heaters and wind screens as part of their 2017 patio agreement shall not be permitted to alter their patio in order to add heat sources or wind screens. And that a bylaw be presented to council for all three readings to amend bylaw twenty-sixteen dash one eighty-nine, being a bylaw to consolidate the delegation of powers and authorities, in order to delegate authority to the director of engineering to require closure of all patios or individual patios in advance of November thirtieth, 2017, as a result of one, a forecast of a winter storm inclusive of continued temperatures below five degrees Celsius, or number two, a requirement by public works or other utility company to perform maintenance in the area of a patio. Councillor Cannon, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, I know it's very late, so I'll keep it, I'll keep it as quick as I can. Obviously, we haven't had great weather conditions. As somebody who's on the Administrative Policies Committee, the timing's not great, seeing as this issue may come up in November. So we brought, councillor Stroud and myself brought a motion forward to try to see if we can help out those who run businesses locally, who have patios. This year, the weather wasn't great. I know, sitting on the BIA, a lot of local businesses have brought up that they haven't been able to take advantage of their patios. They pay a lot of money for these, not only for renting the patio space, but also having to employ people to work on the patio. And if we have great weather, hopefully I didn't just jinx us there, if we have great weather in November, we can keep these spaces open. We've quickly outlined what the patio provider will have to do to extend their timeframe, but also included what the city will have to do in the event of a closure. This is something that will help out our local businesses. Hopefully, it'll promote a little bit of the local economy. People know that patios are open a little bit later, and maybe take advantage of those and help out our local businesses. And those who are tourists in the city on a wonderful day in November, if it's nice and sunny out, they may improve their experience in our community. So pretty straightforward thing, and it's something that I think was probably going to happen the following year, but we made a quick move to try to see if we can do it this year at no cost to the taxpayer. So I hope you support it.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Just quickly, this is something I've been lobbied on in the past, primarily in the spring. And I think one of the realities of global warming is that we will have lovely Marches, March weather in the future, and we may well have some time in November. So I support the intent of this. I would strongly recommend that we look at, at making it from March first to November thirtieth, not on a one-time-only basis, but we explore that potential through the BIA and through our engineers. Is there going to be a charge for this November use? I don't see anything in there.
Mr. Van Beuren?
Through you, your worship. No, the intent would be for no charge for this one-month extension through to the end of November. Just to respond to your earlier comment, councillor, the work that is currently being done to examine the patio season that is slated to return to the Admin Policies Committee, will be looking at both the spring extension, possibly including that month of March, but also looking at the fall as well, in the month of November. So in our interpretation of the motion here in front of us is that this is really just an opportunity for a stopgap measure for this particular fall season.
And a further follow-up, if I might. With no charge, what, if any, additional costs would there be to the city?
Through you, your worship, and again, our interpretation of this motion is that there would not be any recommendation, nor would it be staff's position to charge for this, for all intents and purposes, a pilot exercise for the month of November 2017. That would not necessarily mean that as part of a final recommendation coming forward to the Admin Policies Committee, that there could not be the opportunity to be looking at potential additional fees, because there would be merit in the fact that there is going to be a cost to staff in terms of looking at some of the matters that may be presented as it relates to extending the patio season, particularly if some of the patio operators decide that they're going to be making changes to their patios that need to be reviewed by staff.
Thank you. As I said, I can support this. I think its intention is good. I will say that, having spoken to many restaurant patio operators, there were, I know we had a lot of rain this summer, but I think patio operators, like farmers, are never happy with the weather. And I think that there were clearly some very good patio days in the downtown. But I will support this, and I look forward to the more comprehensive recommendation coming forward.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Stroud?
Yes, I'm hoping for council's support on this. As you heard from the director, it is just one month. It's caused by the discrepancy with the report not coming to us till November seventh, and then not to cancel till later in November, so we've missed this November. And just as a comment about the weather, I mean, it's a very weather-dependent situation, right? You wouldn't be talking about this if it was about summer, because everyone knows patios are for the summer. The thing is, some people actually prefer patios in the shoulder season, like in the spring and in the fall. In the spring especially, because they've been, you know, it's been a long winter, they're looking forward to getting to being outside. But also in the fall, because it's actually not that pleasant to sit in the sun in the middle of the summer, where it is actually quite nice to sit in the sun on a nice day in November. So I think that shoulder season has extended into November, for sure, as already stated, and that's sort of, we're trying to capture this. I think it's a win-win. Thanks.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on new motion number three. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Holland, that the minutes of city council meeting number two thousand and seventeen dash twenty-one, held Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, be confirmed.
Please vote.
One more, please.
And that carries. That's some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Councillor Cannon, you're excused for the first two votes. Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Stroud. That bylaws three and four be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Stroud, that bylaws three and four be given their third reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Stroud, that bylaws one, two, and five through seven be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Stroud, that clause eleven point three four of bylaw number two thousand and ten dash one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw five three readings.
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Stroud, that bylaws five through seven be given their third reading.
Please vote. That carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Neil. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.